Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Fort Lauderdale City Commission meeting this September nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Thank you all for coming here today. We have a number of exciting things to do tonight, including some wonderful presentations and recognitions of individuals and organizations that are within our community. So for those of you who are here for the first time, our meeting consists of a number of items on the agenda, often called Consent Agenda items, in which we vote on them all at once. And after that, we have various resolutions and motions that pertain to particular items in which we'll have a lengthier discussion. But before we ever get to that, we have a number of presentations which we'd like to make tonight. There will actually be three, and they'll be recognizing various individuals or events that are taking place in our community. So let us start the meeting by my please asking you all to rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. I know a lot happens in our day-to-day lives, and I hope you might all join me in respecting a moment of silence that we can all share tonight. Okay, thank you. Mr. Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Commissioner Herbst.
Commissioner Glassman.
Here.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman.
Here.
Commissioner Sturman.
Here.
Mayor Trentalis.
Here. We have full attendance tonight. We have a few agenda announcements which I'd like to make. CR one, Exhibit two, page one. The second whereas clause is stricken, added an amended Exhibit A and amended Exhibit B. The CR seven, the CAM was revised to correct some language on page two. M one, the CAM was revised to add Commission District one to the title. R four, Exhibit one, page thirty-one, was added to the contract and needed to be redlined. Changes to the to the agenda, the minutes, the city clerk is requesting to remove the August twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-three conference meeting minutes. There's some corrections that need to be made, so they will not be voted on tonight. Presentation one was removed from the agenda because the presenter was unable to attend. And finally, R nine, the city manager's office is requesting that we remove that item for tonight's meeting. So do I hear a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So it's R nine?
R nine.
And the other thing you, the other thing you removed?
Presentation number one.
Okay, good. Okay, seconded.
Been moved and seconded? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Glassman.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman.
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman.
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst.
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis.
Yes, and the agenda as amended is now approved. Let me just jump to R nine. Okay. All right, so let us begin with the presentations tonight. I would ask Commissioner Herbst to please step forward and to present a proclamation regarding our Fort Lauderdale Fire Rescue Company number twenty-nine. Is Aaron Kayha there? Press here. There we go. So this gives me a lot of pleasure to be able to do this. So this is in recognition of Fort Lauderdale Fire Rescue Company number twenty-nine from the Office of the Mayor, City of Fort Lauderdale. Whereas, Fort Lauderdale Fire Rescue Company twenty-nine emerged triumphant at the Seventh Annual Riverwalk Chili Cook-Off held on February eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three at Esplanade Park, showcasing their culinary prowess by crafting the best chili in Fort Lauderdale. They haven't had my venison chili, but okay. And whereas, the city of Fort Lauderdale takes immense pride in honoring those who demonstrate outstanding dedication to the community and excellence in their endeavors. And whereas this remarkable victory at the Riverwalk Chili Cook-Off earned Company twenty-nine the distinction of representing our beloved city on the grand stage, qualifying them for participation in the prestigious World Chili Cook-Off to be held in Myrtle Beach, South Carolina, from September twenty-ninth to October first, two thousand and twenty-three. And whereas the International Chili Society, the largest sanctioning body of chili cook-offs in the country, has recognized the excellence of our local event, certifying it as a qualifier for the World Championship Chili Cook-Off, a prestigious competition that attracts chili cooks from across the nation in pursuit of the coveted title of World Champion and a share of the seventy-five thousand dollar prize. And whereas, Riverwalk Fort Lauderdale, as the second-place winner this year, challenged the city of Fort Lauderdale to match its contribution to support Company twenty-nine in their quest for glory, and the city answered the call, standing in solidarity with the competition team, I'm sorry, the competing team. And whereas the city of Fort Lauderdale expresses immense pride in Company twenty-nine for their dedication and eagerly anticipates their success in representing our city on the world stage. Now therefore, we, as city commissioners of the city of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, do hereby proclaim September nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, as Fort Lauderdale Fire Rescue Company twenty-nine Day in the city of Fort Lauderdale, and offer our heartfelt congratulations and extend our best wishes as they embark on their journey to the World Championship Chili Cook-Off, dated this nineteenth day of September, two thousand and twenty-three. Mayor G. Dean J. Trentalis. Congratulations, guys. Would any of you, Aaron, do you want to say anything with regard to this?
Go ahead, step on up.
I'd just like to thank the city commission, thank the commissioners, thank the city manager for all their support, not just for this chili cook-off, but for the support for our fire department throughout the years. We couldn't have have done what we've accomplished without without you guys. We know that you're you have our back and you're behind us all the way. So we look forward to to going to Myrtle Beach and representing the city well and hopefully bringing home some more trophies.
Well, I'm a little disappointed in you. I see you're empty-handed. You didn't bring any samples with you tonight.
Not tonight. We ran out.
Okay, well, all right.
No venison in our chili either, but but there will be buffalo in it.
All right. Well, good luck. What are these? Okay, great, thank you. I guess that'll do. I'd now like to introduce you to Commissioner Steve Glassman, who is here to present a proclamation regarding Hot Dog Heaven Day. Commissioner Glassman.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm very proud to present this proclamation for a business in District two that everyone knows and loves, so I am pleased to read from the Office of the Mayor, City of Fort Lauderdale proclamation. Is Barry here, first of all? Where's Barry? Sorry, Barry. I'm sorry, Barry. Come on down.
You take his brownies and you ignore him.
I knew someone was missing. Sorry. Okay, here we go. Office of the Mayor, City of Fort Lauderdale proclamation, in recognition of Hot Dog Heaven's forty-fifth anniversary. Yes.
Hot dog.
Yes. Whereas, Hot Dog Heaven first opened its doors for business on June nineteenth, nineteen seventy-nine, and is now celebrating its forty-fifth year of serving the community. And whereas, Hot Dog Heaven was the brilliant vision of Barry Starr's parents, Seymour and Rosalynn Starr, and has been proudly owned and operated by Barry Starr since its inception. And whereas, Hot Dog Heaven has become an iconic establishment in our city, situated in a prime location that caters to the local community, downtown employees, and visitors, making it an integral part of Fort Lauderdale's culinary landscape. And whereas, the restaurant's steadfast presence in the same location for forty-five years is a remarkable achievement and a testament to its enduring commitment to serving our community. And whereas, Hot Dog Heaven has maintained a tradition of sourcing its ingredients from longtime associates in Chicago and has exclusively offered official Vienna Beef Company hot dogs, earning the esteemed distinction of being named the first national Vienna Beef Hot Dog Stand. And whereas, Mr. Barry Starr and his devoted wife Pamela have worked tirelessly side by side, not only serving delectable hot dogs, but also employing hundreds of young residents over the decades, providing them with invaluable social and business skills. And whereas, Mr. Barry Starr estimates that he has sold between two and three million hot dogs throughout Hot Dog Heaven's forty-five-year history, leaving an indelible mark on our city's culinary heritage. And whereas, the Stars remain committed to their passion for serving mouth-watering hot dogs to the community, and while they contemplate their future, we hope to enjoy their delightful cuisine for many years to come. Now, therefore, we, as city commissioners of the city of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, do hereby proclaim September nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, as Hot Dog Heaven Day in the city of Fort Lauderdale, and commend Mr. Barry Starr, his family, and the Hot Dog Heaven team for their exceptional dedication, culinary excellence, and significant contributions to our community, dated this the nineteenth day of September, two thousand and twenty-three, and signed by our mayor, the Honorable Dean J. Trentalis.
Say a few words, Barry. Say a few words. Go ahead.
When you start a hot dog stand, you really don't figure this is where it's going to like come to to a head. And you just sometimes don't know if you're in a city that's, you know, got the pace for a hot dog business. It's kind of quick pace and people come and go. And when I first got here, nobody was in a hurry to go anywhere. It's like, what do you do? I'm going to the beach. I'm going here. There's such a pace now. Everybody's in a hurry to go somewhere. So the city really supports hot dogs and my kind of business, and I appreciate all the support over the years that you guys have given me and the love and the reason to show up to work every day is up to work every day is rewarding enough sometimes when, you know, you get the support of your community. So we appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you.
And Mayor, out of that, out of that two to three million hotdogs, I've only consumed about three-hundred-and-eighty-four. So that's not bad. Not bad. Let's take a picture.
Back to the pickleball court for you. So while they're taking pictures, may I ask Elizabeth Fuer to please come up to the podium and join me in recognition of Hispanic Heritage Month? So it is a great honor and privilege to be able to present this proclamation in recognition of historic, excuse me, the Hispanic Heritage Month, which this year is celebrating September fifteenth through October fifteenth. I guess it doesn't have to be in this one month, right? It's just a one-month period, right? So from the Office of the Mayor of the City of Fort Lauderdale, this proclamation in recognition of Hispanic Heritage Month, whereas generations of immigrants from around the globe have relocated to the United States and have contributed to the unique character of our nation. In each year, Americans observe National Hispanic Heritage Month by celebrating the histories, cultures and contributions of American citizens whose ancestors came from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean and Central and South America. And whereas, the observation started in nineteen-sixty-eight, under President Lyndon Johnson as Hispanic Heritage Week. In nineteen-eighty-eight, President Ronald Reagan expanded this period to cover an entire month, beginning September fifteenth and ending October fifteenth. September fifteenth is the anniversary of independence for the Latin American countries of Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras and Nicaragua. Additionally, Mexico and Chile celebrate their independence on September sixteenth and September eighteenth respectively. The Hispanic population of the United States now exceeds sixty-two million people, constituting nearly twenty percent of the total population. Over thirty-four thousand Hispanic people call Fort Lauderdale their home and represent the wide range of nationalities that reflect the diversity of the American people. Finally, during Hispanic Heritage Month, we recognize the continuous efforts of the Hispanic community to achieve equality and success. Furthermore, we pay tribute to the generations of Hispanic Americans who have made a positive and enduring impact on our nation. Now, we therefore, as city commissioners of the City of Fort Lauderdale, do hereby proclaim September fifteenth through October fifteenth, twenty-twenty-three, as Hispanic Heritage Month in the City of Fort Lauderdale, and encourage all to join us and celebrate the rich cultures, contributions and histories of those with Hispanic heritage. Signed by myself, Mayor Dean Trentalis. Congratulations. Would you like to say a few words? Please.
Good evening, City Mayor Trentalis, Commissioners, City Manager and everyone. I'm honored to accept this proclamation on behalf of Hispanic Unity of Florida's clients, staff and Board of Directors. Thank you for celebrating our Hispanic residents' contributions and accomplishments. They are champions that help this country be one of the greatest countries in the world. They are hard-working people, they are construction and farm workers, janitors, housekeepers, doctors, nurses, firefighters, police officers, CEOs, county administrators and city commissioners. Our mission at Hispanic Unity is to empower immigrants and others to become self-sufficient, productive and civically engaged. This is possible because we have your support. Thank you for sharing our dream of an inclusive and equitable community of successful children, strong families and civically engaged individuals. And thank you again for your continued support and recognizing Hispanic Heritage Month. This proclamation is a heartfelt dedication to our Hispanic residents. This is for them. Thank you.
Okay, at this point, we will now go into our agenda. Right now, I will ask each member of the commission if there is any item on the consent agenda that they would like to pull for separate discussion and a separate vote. If there's anybody here in the audience tonight who wishes to speak on a consent agenda item and that item has not been pulled by any member of this commission, I would invite you at the beginning to speak on that item or items, and that way you'll have that opportunity. So Commissioner Herbst, are there any consent agenda items that you'd like to pull? Yes. CR seven. CR seven. Okay. Vice Mayor?
None tonight.
Okay. Commissioner Glassman?
None, thank you.
And Commissioner Sturman?
None.
So except for CR seven, we will be voting on all the other consent agenda items. I see where two people have signed up to speak, but just for questions only. Okay, so, except for CR seven, do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda items?
So moved.
Seconded.
Been moved and seconded? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes. Moving on to CR seven, this is a resolution supporting and authorizing the submission of a grant application to the Reconnecting Communities Pilot Discretionary Grant Program. Commissioner?
Thank you, Mayor. So, actually, I apologize, Mayor, I got my number wrong when I was looking at it, so...
Yeah, I didn't think you'd...
No, 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 that was not the one I was looking for, so I apologize. I'll let it go. Thank you.
Okay. All right.
Motion to approve.
Okay. Thank you. Moving seconded, please call the roll. Well, before you do that, Mr. Mayor, you had alluded to this earlier in the conference, if you wanted to just take a moment to talk about this. Well, I'm not prepared to talk about it right now, so that's why it's on the consent agenda, but if the city manager, he can respond to any questions. But essentially, what this is about is we are finalists in submitting for a grant application for up to almost one million dollars to analyze and explore opportunities that might result in our participating in the commuter rail line that's being contemplated between Miami and West Palm, and how a tunnel approach to connecting under the new river would best suit the City of Fort Lauderdale versus a bridge, and how it would enhance and basically enhance Fort Lauderdale by connecting communities, reconnecting communities that have long been divided by the railroad system that cut right through our city. So that's part of what this is about. So we're hoping that we'll be the recipients of this grant, and so we can really help move the city of Fort Lauderdale forward. Thank you. Has it been moved and seconded? Please call the roll.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, supporting the Broward Metropolitan Planning Organizations' submission of a grant application to the Reconnecting Communities Pilot Discretionary Grant Program of the United States Department of Transportation, partnership with the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, in providing for an effective date. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and that item is now approved. Sorry, Commissioner.
I figured out which one I wanted, but it's too late now because we already heard it.
Okay, all right. Okay, so moving on to motions, this is M one, motion approving an event agreement and related road closures for a vegan block party and others. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and that item is now approved. M two, motion approving an event agreement, related road closures, request for music exemption for Halloween on Second Street. One person signed up to speak, but just for questions, right? So anyone have any questions? There being none, someone like to move the item?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and M two is now approved. M three, motion approved...
Mr. Mayor, I apologize for interrupting.
Yes, sir.
But we received a request from the proposer to pull this item, M three.
To, M three?
Yes.
M three is now been removed from the agenda, so we'll move on to M four. Motion approving the execution of a declaration of restrictive covenants for the protection of interior features of the Parker located at seven oh seven Northeast Eighth Street. Anyone have any questions with regard to that? There being none, would someone like to move the item?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and M four is now approved. M five, motion approving the acceptance of property located at five one five Northwest Fifteenth Avenue from the Fort Lauderdale CRA to the City of Fort Lauderdale. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I hear a second? Been moved and seconded? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and M five is now approved. M six, all right, so now we have a motion denying the protest submitted by Hammerhead Aquatics on the recommendation to award invitation to bid number one forty-one for the aquatic program management at Sunrise Middle School to Park Swim International LLC. We have John Grisak is the only one signed up to speak, but before we do that, I wonder if we could hear from city staff as to what the desire to deny the protest and on what basis.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. Glenn Marcos, Chief Procurement Officer, on the basis of the fact that the city went ahead and followed its procurement process and did not violate any laws, we are recommending to the city commission to deny the protest.
So what is the protest by Hammerhead, and why do you feel that Hammerhead's protest is unfounded?
So their claim and allegation is that the system, the N four system, which is the city's strategic sourcing module, is flawed. That was the first allegation made by the protester. The second allegation is that the protester feels that the procurement agent of record should have responded to one of his emails to confirm that he did submit his bid response.
John, would you like to come up and speak?
Good evening, Commissioners, Mayor. I've got several emails, if I've made copies of, I'd like to give you. In my opinion, this should have never gone past the first bid. Your system is flawed, okay? Hammerhead's has been at this pool for nineteen years.
Now, John, you really have to speak into the microphone, otherwise it can't be recorded.
Hammerhead's has been at this pool for nineteen years now. We've served the city very well, and Mrs. Rose, the person in question, contacted me several times. I have many emails, but if I could give one of these to each of the Commissioners, if you'd like to review. Can I approach the stage? Is that okay? Let's see, there's one, two, three, four, five. So these are just some of the pages of the consent emails. This should have never gone past the first bid, okay? This, our pool lease was extended because N four was never installed in time, and it was extended and extended, and we signed multiple extensions with the city in good faith. On the first thing, as you see on the first page, from Miss Rose, is a follow-up, is there any additional assistance needed? This was in March during the first one. On the second page is a line response, and this is where I said the system was flawed and everything. We put the bid in, and, you know, I couldn't get it to work properly. You see the quantity is, I kept trying to put twenty-five hundred, the monthly was twenty-five hundred. Additional descriptions below. When I spoke to Mr. Marcos and pointed this out, he said, "Well, I can't see that." I asked, "Why is it there?" It took him ten days, ten business days, to call N four and tell me, "Oh, now I see it." Why is this there? I won the bid the first time. If this is your system that you installed, okay, it's there. I put, "We wish to bid this," because I couldn't get that to take that, okay? So we were the good guys. We let it rebid. Again, you go to the third page, conversation with Carl Williams. We opened back up the pool for the summer, a month after it being closed. We lost lots of money. We're a nonprofit. As you can see, this goes to backing your bid. We've already extended a hundred and fifty days. It can only go two hundred and seventy days, there's a hundred and twenty days left to August twenty-eighth, okay? Because I wanted a year at least. This was only extended because your city couldn't get their act together and do this in December when it should have been done in the first place. On the next page, from Jennifer Giggler, the bid will be reopened at three P.M. today. Please make sure you read all stuff, documents. If you have any questions, please send through N four or Miss Rose directly. That was my instructions, okay? On the next page is to Mr. Marcos. Mr. Marcos, could you please give me a call? I cannot seem to be, well, it just goes on anyways. And if you see below before, Monday, July thirty-first at eight oh four A.M., to Miss Heather Rose. Miss Heather, could you please confirm our bid? This is ours before. The next two pages is a timestamp, which we thought was this. In neither one of the bids did I get a receipt. From the first bid that you did get, they said I improperly did, nor the second one. This system is flawed and, you know, maybe I'm an idiot. I'm a great swim coach and program divider, but you can see on the second page, there's a timestamp. I put it in in time.
John, you're not an idiot, number one. You're a great person, and you've certainly served our community great and well all these many years. The staff's concern apparently is that they had a process that they were looking to follow, and they felt that you did not follow the process. I asked them that, I said, "Well, even if he did follow the process, would your application have been approved? Would your proposal have been approved?" And they said to me, "Even if you had followed the process, they still would not have approved you this year." So...
For what reasons?
I don't know all the details.
Mr. Mayor, could I backtrack a little bit? I mean, just for the purpose of everybody here, we know, but I don't think the audience knows, you're bidding on, we know, explain what you're bidding on.
This is a contract to run services for the city at Sunrise Middle School.
What services?
Pool services.
Okay.
Okay, the school board owns the pool. The city has a lease with the thing, and years ago, because the city couldn't... The city has a lease with the thing, and years ago, because the city couldn't operate the pool, we won the bid and started operating it. We formed in 2004 because I was kicked out of the Hall of Fame for turning a child predator who was not arrested, but I got fired.
No, let's take the focus on this.
I got fired for not taking attendance. That's when Hammerhead started, and I went over to Sunrise.
Okay. And you've been doing this for how long?
How long?
With Sunrise? How long have you been doing this with Sunrise?
Since 2004, sir.
Okay, and you've been getting bids every year?
Well, every three years it is.
Okay, okay.
And stuff. And with BidSync, it was very simple. At first, it was hand the bid in, then it was BidSync. This system is flawed. This should have never gone past the first bid. I won the first bid. Why is there a section for additional comments right under the bid? That's what I ask you. Can you tell me that?
Well, I don't think the Commissioner is going to respond to your questions, but I think we should just, let's just allow staff to respond because it's really between staff and you, and staff has so far indicated that you had not responded to the request in a timely fashion, and had you responded, they still didn't think your application measured up to the other competing bids. That's what we've been told.
That's what you've been told. That's not what I was told.
Okay.
The staff told me, why did, they know it was wrong on the first one, why did they rebid it, why did they give me the pool back?
Could we have staff respond to some of that?
Yeah.
So, we had two separate solicitations. The first one-
The bid is for how long? How long is this bid for?
This is-
For the contract? How long is the contract for?
It is a three-year contract.
And the contract expired when, or is expiring?
It already has. Expired.
And the new one is going to start when?
As soon as we can negotiate the next agreement with the recommended awardee.
For three years. Okay, so go ahead, sorry.
So, we did have two separate solicitations. The first solicitation, we ended up having two responses. One of the responses was submitted by Hammerhead. Hammerhead failed to follow the instructions of the bid. He went ahead and submitted in two places of the bid instead of the correct one. The first correct section that was submitted a bid into was for $1,000, which was less than the minimum guaranteed amount that was required. And then in a different section of the bid, he ended up submitting $2,500. Knowing for a fact that Hammerhead failed to follow instructions, we rejected all bid, gave Hammerhead and any other interested bidder the opportunity to respond to this bid. Now we have a second bid.
What's the timeframe on that? How long ago was that?
You're looking at, giving here a second here, several weeks back.
The first one was in March.
This was back in August. So, now we have the second bid before you, and once again, we have the same problem, where Hammerhead did not follow instructions, and they failed to submit a timely bid. We had three interested bidders. Two out of the three left their bids in draft status. Hammerhead is one of those two. We went ahead and reached out to the other interested bidder, which they also left their bid in draft status, and they came back and admitted, and that's part of the exhibit before you, that they intended to leave their bid in draft status and indicated that N4 is indeed working correctly.
Just, do you have, he has a current contract now that expired, correct?
That is correct.
And that goes back-
It actually expired in December.
But that's three years ago, right?
No, it actually expired in December.
No, but it was a three-year contract, right?
It was a three-year contract that expired in December of last year.
It did not.
The city had to extend it temporarily.
No, but my point is, you did apply, you did apply for that one, correct? Three years ago?
Yes.
Sir, if you would answer into the microphone, please.
I'm sorry. My current contract actually, first time, expired in December of last year because the city couldn't-
But three years ago, you did properly bid on that one?
Yes, I did, okay?
But why were you able to properly bid on that one and not this one?
This is a new system, okay? This is a new system, and as I stated, Mrs. Rose knew that she did everything she could to get me to bid. They knew that I was going to bid. They knew that I have all intentions of bidding, okay? I went through this with emails after the first time because of the hullabaloo with the system, okay? Where I said, and you can see additional comments, that's right under the bid. That's the same page. That's the only thing I could see, okay? And I put it in there because I couldn't get it to work, all right? My bid was that. I won the bid. I was the highest bidder. I was the highest bidder first, second time also. The human and his staff knew that I was going to bid on this and had all intentions of bidding on this. I contacted Miss Rose, as you see, and Mr. Marcos, on the morning of the 31st, and said, "Please make sure my bid is in with time to get the bid in." I won the bid the second time also.
Did you receive that email? Staff? You have it.
We did receive the email, Commissioner, but the solicitation requirement is quite clear. The responsibility of submitting a bid lies with the actual bidder. It's not for staff to be responding to each and every bidder to verify whether or not a bid has been pre-received or not.
May I refer you, Commissioner, may I refer you back to Ms. Giggler's orders on the second page? Please contact Miss Rose directly or through the N4 system. I am the highest bidder twice. It should have never gone past the first thing. I've served this community well.
I have a question for staff, please. The current online bidding application that we're using, when did it go into effect? How long?
Online October 4th of 2022. And just to inform the commission, when you do go online, Commissioner, there is a clear instructional guide that gives you a step-by-step on how to register with the city and how to submit in response to a bid that's been issued by the city.
Commissioners, my next argument with you is, after the first bid, and Mr. Marcos saw that I put the additional comments, even on the second bid, I put additional comments. As I stated before, he stated to me, "Oh, I can't see that. Why can't you see that? I have to call N4 to see that." And my question was, if you have a bid there and you have additional comments on the same page, why can't they see that? This makes good common sense to me. I hope that it would to you folks also. If the city's interested in revenue, I was the highest bidder both times. After the first one, you gave me back the pool because you recognized I was right. I made all efforts to contact the city and make sure that there wasn't a problem and that we would not be here today. I would not be here today if I was not the highest bidder.
Okay, thank you, John.
You're welcome.
So, folks, what is your pleasure? The staff is recommending a motion denying the protest by John Grisack.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
So, this is interesting to me, and I'm going to actually defer to the district commissioner on this, but I've been getting a lot of emails, calls, et cetera, et cetera, and I think it's because folks in Point Set of Heights still think that they're in my district, District 2, but when we redistricted-
It's hard to let go.
It is hard to let go. But when we redistricted, this neighborhood and school went into District 1. So, I've been trying to explain to people that I'll do the best I can in terms of research, but I need to hear from the district commissioner on this because I, here's the deal. When I look at the information, and I know there's just conflicting information, but if we do uphold the protest that John wants us to uphold, my fear is that the community will not have this pool in operation for a long time still. Because right now, the pool is out of operation, correct? Someone help me with that?
Yes.
How long has the neighborhood and the people that swim there and get lessons there, how long has it been that they have not had the pool in operation? Where's that?
A month.
A month? Okay.
Can you please, all right?
So, I understand, so it's been a month, and that's what's upsetting a lot of the folks. The emails that I'm getting, the comments that I'm getting are from people that are very frustrated that the service is not being provided to them anymore. They've been very supportive of Hammerhead and don't really seem to understand the intricacies of this process and what has been happening. But I'm going to need a little bit more clarity because I know that John is saying that he won the first bid, but that's not what I'm reading on the cam. I'm reading that actually there was a mistake because the amount was entered in two different places, and they were conflicting amounts. So, staff seems to have, as a courtesy almost to Hammerhead, they threw out the whole thing and rebid it, correct?
That's correct, Commissioner.
Correct. So then we find ourselves again in a second bid where, again, and I don't know if it's staff's fault, I don't know if it's the system's fault, the software's fault, Hammerhead's fault, I just know that what happened was that Hammerhead was ruled not eligible because of the response to the bid, and that's why it went to Park Swim International.
Correction.
So, it's causing a lot of aggravation in the neighborhood, but again, it's not in my district, and I'm hoping that all of the people that have been writing to me also wrote to Commissioner Herbs, so I just need to hear from him because I just need to get a little bit more clarity on some of those points and how he feels because, I mean, I'm going to be honest with you, my inclination is actually to not do a motion to deny the protest. I'm almost willing to accept the protest, but for the fact that that would then put this process all the way back to the beginning, and it could be months more before these services are offered. So, that's the dilemma. That's the catch 22.
Couple of points I want to make, Commissioner. Number one, there was not a response. It was non-response. He never responded. It was in draft status.
So- Wait, that's the second bid?
This is for the second bid.
No response.
So, no response. He's indicating there was a response, but the system is very clear, and it's part of your exhibit, as to who responded and who did not respond.
So, I read that.
Hammerhead did not respond, number one. Number two, the actual administration is going one step further because a non-response means that he doesn't have standing to submit a protest. But I still went ahead and allowed for the protest, and I wanted to give Hammerhead their due process here. And that's what's before you, but technically, when you look at standing, the protester has no legal standing because he technically never submitted a response.
Let me ask you a question. So, if the commission decides to deny the protest, how quickly would Park Swim International be able to set up operations and then provide the services at the pool?
Not sure, because we're going to have to perhaps maybe negotiate some terms and conditions, but it wouldn't be a lot, Commissioner. I would say that they would probably take as long as it would be if we would consider moving forward with Hammerhead. This is a completely total separate contract that needs to be negotiated, but I would think the timeframe would be one of the same.
Okay, and then if we did not, I mean, I'm sorry, if we did accept the protest and this had to go out to bid again, how long would that process be?
Well, Commissioner, now there's another element that's introduced if you do that because now this will be the third time, and now we're now sending a resounding message to our supplier community that when we end up issuing a solicitation, they're not going to take us seriously anymore. So, I think there's some credibility that's involved here. I don't want to lose our credibility. That means everything to us. The fact of the matter is, is that you've had two separate solicitations, and we're hearing from a person or Hammerhead that has done everything wrong, and yet we are giving Hammerhead extra consideration, and yet we're ignoring the one party that has done it right twice. So, we're now looking at perhaps penalizing that party or that bidder that has done everything correctly, and yet we're entertaining the one that has not submitted or followed the instructions.
No, I understand. Where I struggle is that Hammerhead has provided these services, I think, for 10 years.
Steve, in your opinion, how well-received was Hammerhead? I mean, when you were the Commissioner, the service-
Well, I've never had, I've never had any complaints, and I've already asked staff if there's any kind of performance issues or contract issues, and I've been told, "No, there's never been any performance or contract issues," and I've never had any issues of complaint up until, I guess, this neighborhood went into District 1 about 10 months ago, 11 months ago.
I find myself agreeing with you. I would like to hear from John.
Exactly.
I defer to the district commissioner.
John, do you have any thoughts on this?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioner Glassman, for holding hands with the folks that left you behind and moved on to my district. I appreciate you taking care of them. So, let's kind of look at this, you know, so, from more of a process perspective. I agree that I think Hammerhead has done a great job in providing services up there. I've not heard any complaints. I do hear the same issues you're hearing about the desire to get the pool reopened. I think that's the primary goal for the community, and I think anything that slows that down is disadvantageous to the folks over there in Point Set of Heights. But I want to focus again more on process. As Glenn said, having been on the staff side, having done RFPs for many years, I'm very concerned about the message that we send out to the vendor community when we reject RFPs, bids, multiple times. It discourages people from participating in the process. They wonder what's wrong with it. They wonder why the bids keep getting tossed out. So, it's a very bad precedent to set. As regards the bid protest policy, this was actually put in place at my request well over a decade ago because we never had one, going back to when Kirk Buffington was the Director of Procurement. And we worked on a policy because every one of these would come to the commission for adjudication, and we would have this pleading at the king, at the king's throne sort of process. And we recognize that that was not fair to anybody involved, whether it be staff, whether it be the commission, or whether it be the various folks who were trying to compete for contracts. And so, we established an orderly process in order to bring structure to this, and I think it's imperative that we honor the process. In this case, we have gone through the process. As Glenn explained, there's not even a basis for the claim since there's no standing at this point, since the bid was never submitted. So, this is not any commentary on Hammerhead's ability to deliver a quality service to the residents of the city, but we've got to respect the process. We've got to respect our bid process. Our systems work, and we have to respect the bid protest process. So, I'm not going to be in favor of hearing the protest. I think we should simply move forward on the action as proposed by staff, and then on to the next item after that.
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
In regards to this new system that is being used, this came in in '22, correct? October '22 is what you said?
That is correct, Commissioner.
Okay, my question is, how, I understand you said there's instructions, but how user-friendly is it?
Very similar to the prior system, BidSync. When you look at it, the process is the process. So, whether it's BidSync or DemandStar, Commissioner, or even N4, Oracle, they all work very similarly. So, there's not a lot of difference between the prior system and the new system.
Okay, because my concern is, with opportunity and understanding how to use computer applications, some people are more inclined to understand the process where others are not, and I wonder, is that also a issue? If there's cases where we have a lot of bids that are lingering in draft, maybe that's something we need to look at as well to see how user-friendly it really is. Because what's user-friendly to me may not be user-friendly to the next person, and if we're going to offer an opportunity that's fair to all, let's consider what is being offered.
Understood, understood. And just for the record, when a supplier or a bidder does submit their bid, once you hit the submit button, it does give you confirmation that it's been submitted. The other bidder that submitted, Park Swim is here. They're- it's been submitted. The other bidder that submitted, Park Swim is here. If they have to respond to any of your questions, I think they're here to kind of answer it. But I think that perhaps maybe we should ask them how willing and how fast they're willing to negotiate a contract. Perhaps maybe within the next couple of days, we can just finalize it and move forward. Thank you.
Before that, can I just ask one more question? I'm sorry. What is the reason that rather than shut the services down, that Hammerhead couldn't have some sort of extension just until this all worked out so that services were still being provided until such time as this happened?
So all the extension days was utilized. So after the contract expires, administratively, we can extend the contract by 270 days. That 270 days was fully exhausted.
So we actually did go 270 days past the expiration of the contract?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
May I say you went 270 days because they never got it together last year. I had to sign extensions to wait on you folks, okay? I had to sign extensions because your staff couldn't get it together. All right?
Okay.
Now, my question is, I won both bids. I did everything I could. They knew I was there. I never got an answer. I answered before the time was up that the bid was in to Ms. Rose on the second time. The first time, my question for you commissioners, especially you Vice Mayor Beeson, why is there a section for notes right under there? Why couldn't Mr. Marcos tell me immediately that he couldn't see that when I sent it to him on the first bid? I won the first bid. He had to go ask N4. When I handed my protest in to your city staff over here at the building, they laughed. Not another one from N4.
All right. Vice Mayor is not going to answer that question. So, all right. Is there any further comment? Anyone want to make a motion with regard to this item? District Commissioner, do you want to make a motion?
Commissioner, I'm the owner of Park Swim International, and just to let you know, we were ready to go.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion.
Motion to deny the bid protest.
So, okay, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All right. M6, motion denying protest submitted by Hammerhead Aquatics. We have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and that item is approved, denying the protest. M7, motion approving revenue-based service agreement for aquatic program management, Sunrise Middle School, excuse me, Middle Pool, Park Swim International, annual revenue of $18,000.
So moved.
John, you wanted to speak on this?
I think he's left.
He left? Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and that item is approved. You know, I don't know what really happened here. I guess there's a lot of, you know, back and forth, but, you know, I have to respect what the city staff has done here. And like Commissioner Herbst said, we have to respect the process. I heard that he had the application second time around, ready to go, he just failed to push the send button. I mean, I don't know about that, but I think you did everything you could to allow John to be able to present a second time. And, you know, again, I think the commissioner's made the right decision tonight, and I'm glad we're moving forward.
And I would just say that, to me, the most important thing is making sure that the families and the children are able to avail themselves of the service. I really hope Park Swim gets it up and running really quickly. And I would also recommend maybe you meet with the Point Set of Heights Civic Association and the families and just establish a really nice relationship from the get-go. They're lovely people.
Thank you.
Yes.
I live there.
Is this my time or your time?
It's my time. It's always my time.
It's always your time. Yes, he does. But he doesn't know how to swim, so maybe you can help him with that.
He's a constituent.
That'd be great.
He does. I stopped by his house during the campaign.
There you go. And he was swimming. So here's the deal. Really, just, please, just be communicative with the neighborhood, work it out. I'm sure you guys will do a great job. Let him know what you're going to do. So I think we can get to a point where everyone is happy.
All right.
Thank you.
And I would like to say regarding the process and the application that she used, I think we should give some type of consideration to make sure, some type of check and balance to make sure that the process is friendly user, user-friendly. I've gotten emails about different bids and things where people seem to feel that they're not actually being processed or the system isn't working properly. So could we, city manager, have someone to do a check guard with that?
Yes, we will do that. In fact, I would like to work with the city auditor so he can help us just review that from another perspective as well. We'd love to make sure that everything works properly.
I think that's probably the right path. I'll offer up two suggestions, having spent a little time in IT. You may want to consider developing a tutorial, if you don't already have one, that walks people through on a screen-by-screen basis. You know, here's how you do this. Because to Commissioner Beasley Pittman's perspective, I've worked with folks who wanted to sign up for BidSync and were very frustrated. I haven't talked to anybody with the new system yet, but to your point, they're all roughly the same. So anybody who was experiencing frustration with BidSync has probably experienced frustration with N4. The second thing I would suggest, and because I know every software package out there has an opportunity for add-ons after the fact, so one of the things you can bring up in the user groups, and for anybody who's done any online shopping, which is everybody in the room, if you leave something in your cart, you get bombarded with emails about, hey, you forgot this, come on back. And so, you know, if somebody does a draft form and doesn't complete it, doesn't hit the send button, I think we can proactively reach out to them and say, hey, you left this in your cart. Did you want to do that? Or did you just forget to hit send? So I think we will remove this particular type of protest issue in the future if we just, you know, do an upgrade to the system that allows for a proactive response and not just a reactive one. So please talk to N4. I'm sure they'll be happy to charge us for enhancement.
Duly noted. I'll be happy to take a look at it.
R1, appointment of board and committee members. Mr. Clerk, would you like to read the names to the record?
Yes, thank you. For the October 3 resolution, Beach Business Improvement District Advisory Committee, Jeffrey Peterson, and he will be the primary member representing the Sonesta Fort Lauderdale Beach Resort. Central City Redevelopment Advisor Board, Carlton Smith, that's a consensus appointment nominated by Commissioner Glassman. And for tonight's resolution, Budget Advisory Board, Jeff Lowe, nominated by Mayor Trentalis. Cemetery System Board of Trustees, Mark Van Reese, nominated by Mayor Trentalis. Central City Redevelopment Advisor Board, Linda Fleishman, nominated by Commissioner Glassman. Community Appearance Board, Vida Moss, nominated by Commissioner Herbst. Education Advisor Board, Tina Yaramilo, nominated by Mayor Trentalis. Suzanne Dean, nominated by Commissioner Herbst. Newsense Abatement Board, Chris Smith, nominated by Commissioner Sturman. And we have one reappointment that we had received after publication, if we can add this one, for the Public Art and Placement Advisor Board, Gregory Reed. He's a consensus for designee of the Chair of the Broward County Public Art and Design Committee, and that rounds it out.
Okay. Are there any additions or modifications? There being none, would someone like to introduce the resolution?
And that's amended.
Introduced as amended.
Thank you. A resolution to the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, appointing or nominating, if applicable, board and committee members as the fourth in the exhibit attached here, too, made a part here of. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and that resolution is now approved. I want to thank the individuals who have committed themselves to participating in these boards and committees. Thank you for your service to our community. R2, a resolution approving amendments to the city's investment policy. Someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduced.
Any questions? There being none, please call the roll.
A resolution to the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, amending the investment policy for the city of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, and providing for rescission of conflicting resolution provisions at an effective date. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and R2 is now approved. R3, a resolution approving and ratifying a collective bargaining agreement between the City of Fort Lauderdale and the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge 31, police officers and sergeants, effective October 1, 2022 through September 30, 2023, and authorizing execution of the collective bargaining agreement.
Introduced.
Introduced.
Introduced a third time.
Any questions with regard to this item?
I have some comments, Mayor. And I can't help myself, so you're just going to have to bear with me. Thank you. First of all, I want to congratulate everyone that's been involved in this process. It's a long time coming without a contract for over a year. I especially want to thank the FOP. I want to thank everyone who voted. A 95% turnout in support of a contract is an amazing, amazing percentage. You rarely see something like that. And that leads me to my next comment. On August 24, the Sun Sentinel Editorial Board wrote what I consider to be one of the most insulting editorials I have ever seen. The gist of it was, and I'll just read one paragraph, "The police officers whom we expect to serve and protect us don't have enough people in city government serving and protecting them." That is an awful statement. Whether it's a matter of getting clickbait so that people click on to an editorial that says Fort Lauderdale police deserve better treatment, if that's their strategy, I think it's disgusting. Because this city commission, and the prior city commission that I served with, has nothing but the utmost respect for our first responders, our men and women in blue, our police, our fire rescue. We honor them, we treat them with dignity, and we work with them as partners. So I want you to know that I found that editorial. I haven't said anything, and that came out on August 24 because I wanted to make sure we got to a point where we're working with our partners, and we come up with an agreement in collective bargaining that works for the police and works for the taxpayers of the city of Fort Lauderdale. I'm not going to get into the rest of this editorial and go line by line with all the garbage that I read in that editorial. But that is a bad way for our hometown newspaper to create a sense of conflict, a sense of the fact that we don't care about the people that work for the city, especially our first responders who put their lives on the line every single day. So I just wanted to say thank you to the police, thank you to staff who negotiated, thank you to this commission who agreed to move forward and agree to all of the terms, thank you to the former commission who actually started some of this process before this commission, as is here. And I want every single citizen in the city of Fort Lauderdale to know that this city government cares, cares deeply about our first responders. And for anyone to insinuate that we don't, whether it be the Sun Sentinel Editorial Board, and by the way, I'm going to make a distinction between the Sun Sentinel Editorial Board and the journalists, the writers, who write the articles about these issues that we see. That I find very balanced, very fair, both sides. Editorial Board, not so much, not so much. And again, I think it might be a strategy to try to get people to click on to these editorials and read it. But again, it's just a bad look for our hometown newspaper to make anyone think. So that once in a while we'll see a letter to the editor with someone who's drinking the Kool-Aid and has jumped on the bandwagon of, oh, yeah, that commission treats our first responders and our police so horribly. That's not the truth. Again, I found it offensive. It was insulting, not just to me, but to this commission, to our city management, to our police, to everyone involved. I just want to make it really clear, Mayor, that that is a bad look for the Sun Sentinel, and we do care, and we honor, we honor our first responders. Congratulations to the police. This is a great agreement. Thank you for your patience, and thank you to city staff negotiated, and again, thank you to my colleagues. That's it, Mayor. Thank you for letting me vent.
Mr. Mayor, one second.
Go ahead.
When I came in, I saw the FOP, the president, and are they in the audience here? If they wanted to stand for a second just so we could recognize you guys. Oh, there you are. I was looking for you. Listen, thank you so much. I just want to recognize you. Okay, anyone else have any comments? I'd like to just take a moment and reflect upon what Commissioner Glassman just said. You know, everyone's entitled to their own opinions, and I guess that's what editorials are all about. But aside from the editorial, I want to echo the commissioner's praise of our police department. This was a long time coming. As you can tell, it's been almost a year since we last had our last contract in effect. But I think it's important that everyone understand that this commission and all commissions do our best to try to balance the interests of this community in terms of wanting to ensure that we have sufficient resources for our police department to function and protect ourselves, and to try to ensure that we can afford it, being able to afford the kinds of services that this community deserves. Moving forward, this commission has voted to build a brand-new police facility. As many of you can see, it's already under construction. It's going to be a world-class facility that can withstand category five hurricane, and that will supply the city, the city police department with sufficient room to grow as this city continues to grow. I want to applaud our city manager for his tenacity in being able to bring this process to a close like he has. I want to thank the police union for participating in that effort and to ensuring that this community continues to remain safe as it always has been. This is a very rich contract, but it's very well-deserved, and I think that, I hope the city commission will vote in favor of it so that we can continue to ensure the people of our community the safety and well-being that they are entitled to. And if there's no further comments, I'd like to call for a vote. Do we have a motion to approve?
Yeah, we have.
Motion to approve.
A resolution to the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, approving and ratifying a collective bargaining agreement between the City of Fort Lauderdale and Fort Lauderdale Police Lodge 31, FOP, police officers and sergeants for the period October 1, 2022 through September 30, 2023, and authorizing execution of the collective bargaining agreement. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Absolutely. You guys deserve it, yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and R4 is now approved. Thank you very much. And on to the next agreement.
That was three.
R5?
No, that was three.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. I meant to say R4. I'm sorry. Thank you. Thank you for correcting me. R4, a resolution approving and ratifying collective bargaining agreement between the City of Fort Lauderdale and the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge 31, police officers and sergeants, effective October 1, 2023 through September 30, 2026, and authorizing the execution of the collective bargaining agreement. Someone like to introduce?
Introduce.
Wow.
Introduced.
All right. Are there any questions? Okay, I ditto my comments again on this item. Please call the roll.
A resolution to the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, approving and ratifying a collective bargaining agreement between the City of Fort Lauderdale and Fort Lauderdale Police Lodge 31, FOP, police officers and sergeants for the period October 1, 2023 through September 30, 2026, and authorizing execution of the collective bargaining agreement. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes. And again, I want to thank our city manager and his staff for all the great work that they did in making this happen, along with the partnership with the police union. R5, a resolution approving? A resolution approving the consolidated budget amendment to fiscal year 2023.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to ask if we could remove Section D from this budget amendment, please?
Section D?
Yes.
Let's see. Section D.
Any reason why, Greg? That's the pensionable overtime adjustment?
Susan, come and provide an explanation on that.
Say it again?
Susan will come and provide that explanation.
What is this seating called? Opera seating or something?
Susan Grant, Assistant City Manager. Sorry, I wasn't up here. Section D was dependent on...
You didn't have front row seats?
Yeah, but Section D was dependent on the outcome of the votes on the two contracts. If they were unanimous, we didn't need to fully fund the unfunded liability for the extra 40 hours of pensionable overtime.
Okay.
Thank you. So R5, as amended, removing Section D. Do I hear a resolution?
Yes.
Resolution's been introduced. Any further questions? There being none, please call the roll.
A resolution to the city commission of the city of Fort Lauderdale, Florida amending the city of Fort Lauderdale fiscal year 2023 final all funds budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2022 and ending September 30, 2023, as amended by appropriating and transferring funds as set forth in the commission agenda memo 23-0875 and providing for severability in an effective date. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sternman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and R5 is now approved. R6, resolution providing notice of intent to enter into a comprehensive agreement for a qualifying project submitted as an unsolicited proposal to construct, operate, and maintain a water taxi terminal located at 1001 Seabreeze Boulevard and to accept other proposals for the same project. Someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduce.
Introduce.
Mayor, you would have to designate the time period for the bids between
Right.
21 days or 180?
120, I think.
Wait, wait, wait.
Hundred.
It's 100 and
Or 120, sorry.
Right.
No problem.
Thank you. So what was the lower amount number?
21.
21, 21 and 120, right. So as part of, was it the, Commissioner Sternman, you introduced it?
I did.
Okay, so pick a number of days with regard to the time period in which competing offers can be entertained.
I mean, I would go a little bit longer than 21 days, so I would say, I guess
Say 60?
I would say, I was gonna say somewhere between 30 and 45 should be enough.
60?
60 is a little long for this, this is a little patch of not much.
Okay, we'll pick a day.
I'm gonna pick, I'll say 45.
Okay, 45 days.
That's plenty.
So the resolution includes a 45-day period in which to accept other proposals for the same project. We have a couple people who've signed up to speak. Mr. Millet is just to answer questions, probably. Bill Brown? Bill, did you want to talk? Oh, there you go. Push the button.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the commission, Bill Brown, President of the Central Beach Alliance. Just briefly, we understand this process. We understand that why we weren't informed because it's under the shade until it's brought before the commission and the action that you take tonight. We look forward to whatever proposal comes forward in the future to have a good, honest dialogue with that developer and take an honest look once that proposal or any proposal has been accepted. And we have communicated that with Mr. Walker. He's ensured us that if his proposal is finally accepted, that he will continue that, those dialogues and that discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt Sacco, is that just for questions, Matt?
Yeah.
Tony Spald, huh? I can't, is it Spalding? Followed by, followed by Ann Hilmer, followed by John Burns. Did you not want to speak? Oh, you forgot something? Okay. You're a pro by now, aren't you? Is it Spalding? Okay.
I'll have to improve my handwriting for you, Mr. Mayor.
I don't read hieroglyphics.
Sorry about that. So I just found out about
Please speak into the microphone as best you can.
I just found out about this yesterday.
Okay.
So I don't, you know, I'm not opposed totally, but I'm hoping that there's stuff that you would consider when these bids come in. Apparently you have this beautiful piece of property that's on the intercoastal that the city owns, and I guess it's now going to be developed for a private company and a private company's use. And gee, I wish I'd have known about it because maybe I would have tried to talk the city into putting in like public dock space for residents of the city or anybody with boats to be able to go to the beach and dock there for free and not drive, maybe go by intercoastal or something like that. But if you do consider this, hopefully you will consider collecting enough rent that you can use that rent from the business to pay for other things that are helpful to the city, like maybe cleaning up some of the trash along the waterway that the people on the water taxi get to look at as they're riding around on the water taxi and, or you know, something along those lines, something, maybe they'll build dock space for public use along with dock space for their use, something to consider for the rest of us that live here too.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Ann Hilmer, followed by John Burns, and Joe Biorde, those are just for questions. Ann, good evening.
Good evening, Ann Hilmer, 621 Idlewild. I just have one question or one comment. With all the building on the beach, what happens when we need a bigger fire station in that space to meet the needs of the people on the beach, needs of the beach residents and those in the aisles that this fire station serves? If you sign it away for 30 years plus X number of years more, it's gone and you don't have the ability to expand the fire station. Thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to ask the city manager a question about that, actually. So have discussions happened with our fire chief? And also, I always hear things that are happening that maybe even that station might move itself, and, but I just want to flesh that out a little bit. Is there a concern that that property should be held for the adjacent fire station?
So about expansion, certainly there is no need for that specific site. In fact, the fire chief will tell you he's coming up to the podium that there have been discussions about looking at expanding further up north where perhaps the service levels can be improved.
Do you mean as far north as Cypress Creek Road?
No.
Oh, good, I'll cut this one short.
North by La Solas.
Sorry.
So the fire chief is here, he can explain more.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. In reference to that area, we would, we do have some expansion plans in place, future growth for the island and the immediate response plan that we have there. But none of our plans require the use of that property at all. With the new station coming in on La Solas Boulevard, it'll help the response times. We also have the new station over there by Broward General, helps everything on the west side of the bridge. And so we're content with what we have as a footprint in that area at this time.
Okay, thank you.
John Burns? Hello, John.
Hi, John Burns from the Venetian condominium 1 La Solas Circle. I too have some concerns about how the decision was made that the public or that the city did not need the property either now or in the future. I'm just not, I don't understand how that conversation is held and who makes those decisions. I would be concerned, number one, it's basically a parking lot right now. It does have vote access, that vote access for the water taxis which are parked right there right now could continue, but there could be other uses. It could be conjoined with the Behemar property because that's right next door. I am concerned about the traffic and the traffic pull-off from the new Marina Village because I think that's going to be a hassle on Seabree, on A1A Seabreeze right then. So I do have some concerns about a four-story building in this particular location. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Is this in District 2?
Yes, sir.
Barely. So do either of you gentlemen have any comments with regard to this?
Could I, oh, I mean, the two of us or them?
Go ahead, Commissioner Sternman.
Could you be, a couple quick things, if you could have the developer come up for a few minutes, both you guys, all three if you want. Do you have a presentation or just for questions or what?
We do have a presentation if you, if you'd like to hear it.
We could do that, but I do have a few questions if I could go over with you first or later, what's better for you, could I ask you a few things?
Sure.
Okay, I have a couple comments, and we've spoken about this by John and Matt, Bill, thank you very much for coming forward. I have four issues that I'd just like to discuss with you and things that have come up. First of all, for a P3, one of the criteria is have a public purpose, and that's one of the concerns that we had with this particular project that you have. Could you tell us in your opinion what your thoughts are as far as a public purpose?
Yeah, John Millet, attorney for the water taxi, so that's an excellent question. So the water taxi is really not a taxi, it's really a water trolley. There's vehicles that follow a schedule, it's public transportation. It operates about 10 hours a day, there's approximately 10 stops, it runs up and down the intercoastal from 17th Street, I think, up to about Oakland Park and then up to New River. So it's largely run for the benefit of the city, but largely funded privately. I think you, I think you fund just one of the transportation routes, but, so it's really a benefit to the city. And really, if you think about Fort Lauderdale, the top 10 things that you think about, what is iconic about Fort Lauderdale, the water taxi comes to mind. So really, it's an amenity for the city that the private sector's been funded, but that doesn't mean it's not, it's not public transit. So when you really look at the statute itself, if this doesn't qualify, nothing qualifies, in my opinion. So I'll just read from the statute 255-065, it's called the definition of a qualifying project. And what it says is, "A facility or project that serves a public purpose, including but not limited to any ferry or mass transit facility." Those are the first two items that are mentioned. There's a number of other things that are mentioned, gas and power lines, rail facilities, things of that nature. But the first thing they mention is ferries and mass transit, so that's exactly what we're doing. So again, if we don't qualify, then the statute really, no one will, could qualify under the statute.
Couple other items here too, I mean, we see this over and over again with the P3s. I think we're getting a dollar a year, it sounds like not quite a partnership made in heaven. We discussed this earlier, would you, I think we would like to get more of a revenue sharing as far as going forward.
Well, I think I'm talking to Mr. Walker, everything is on the table. If we, the way the process works, it'll be advertised. If anyone else comes to the table, then there'll be a ranking, and then you rank, and whoever you rank with, there's a negotiation. So we'll sit at the table in good faith, everything's on the table, so that's what I'll say to you. We spent a lot of time and effort on the design, we've worked with the planning staff, which we, Matt can walk you through the elevations, and I think we're prepared to, they're, I think in your overhead, and we can show you, you know, very quickly. But you'll see, we spent a lot of effort on the aesthetics, which is very important to the city. But we'll sit down with you in a transparent way and show you, and show you what we can and cannot do, and then, you know, and fairly come to an agreement.
And like they mentioned, you'll be reaching out to the neighborhoods involved and all
100%, and we can't, couldn't really do that in a process until we came to the city and the city said they were interested before we really go in the neighborhood, but then we'll obviously go to the varying groups on the beach.
Two other items I just want to touch upon, I think that are reasonable. I think you, the original proposal has the city only having access four days a year to the facility, is that something, I think that's something that we would want
Yeah, as I mentioned, everything's on the table.
Okay, and the last one, I think this is, this is going to be a win-win. To define this as public purpose, one of the thoughts, and we had discussed this, John, like I think yesterday, that currently water trolley has had six, now there's eight stops along the New River. Adding a stop, a water trolley stop over there, I think that would clearly put you in public, public purpose, putting a stop for the water trolley over there, is that something you'd be amenable to? I think I'd mention it to one of you.
Good evening, Commissioner. Sure, we want a small water trolley service that goes from Riverside Hotel up to the Espinac Center, there's eight stops in there. You know, taking one vessel to go down to that beach area, it's something we could certainly talk about in the future, because you'd want to get frequency, capacity, and those types of things to make it a very user-friendly service.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much for your time. But do you want to, do you want to do your presentation, I forgot to answer that?
Sure, can you see this image in front of you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners? I see it here, but I'm just making sure that you are seeing the, there you go. David, can I control this or, okay. I just want to show you this view because it shows the water slips, so. Good evening, thanks for the time, Matt Sacco, representing Water Taxi. I just want to introduce our team very quickly. Obviously, John Millet, attorney, working with us. You have Bill Walker, owner of the water taxi, and you also have Joe Biorde, our architect of record from Adachi, and Canatelli Builders, our contractor. We submitted this unsolicited proposal on May 12th to construct, operate, and maintain a water taxi terminal located at 1001 Seabreeze Boulevard. We're calling the project The Landing. It'll be four stories, approximately 8,000 square feet, and will include a first-floor dock master and ticket office, welcome center, a second-floor indoor-outdoor waiting refreshment area, a third-floor indoor-outdoor public restaurant, and a fourth-floor indoor-outdoor event area, which Commissioner Sternman was referencing. The site is 0.19 acres, the city previously determined that it is not needed for governmental purposes, as the city manager mentioned, but it's been for decades used for commercial dockage and most recently used by the water taxi. The water taxi actually began utilizing it about 18 months ago when it became clear that much of their slips and operations were going to be disrupted by the new rain tree development on the New River. So working with the city, the team identified the site as an opportunity to create a small but effective transportation hub on the Barrier Island. Water Taxi, for your information, did over 1 million boardings in the past year, improve access to the beach and other public amenities, which fits in with many of the city's strategic initiatives, and then partner with other transportation providers like Brightline and Circuit to alleviate traffic and congestion on the Barrier Island, particularly during high-traffic events like the Air and Sea Show, the Boat Show, Tortuga, et cetera, and to create an aesthetically pleasing public amenity that can be enjoyed by everyone. Also, as a reference to what the gentleman earlier mentioned, the docks, when not being used by the water taxi during the day because they're out transporting folks, will be accessed by the public whenever needed. To accomplish this goal, Water Taxi is committed to completely funding the project. It's estimated $8 to $10 million in capital costs. They're 100% responsible for the operations and maintenance of the project over the term of the lease, and they'll provide the space to the city free of charge for whatever agreed-upon amount we negotiate and any and other additional needs that the city may have. As stated, the project fits with many of the city's objectives and strategic initiatives, including improving access and enjoyment to our beach, waterways, parks, and open spaces. Thanks for your time, and we appreciate your support.
Matt, will there be a refreshment concession in this building? It looks almost like a yacht club here.
Not quite yacht club level, Mayor, but yes, there will be refreshment in there and also a restaurant that's open to the public.
Okay, cool. So it's anticipated that people would park across the street and then just walk across the street to be able to access it?
We're a little bit more hopeful that people will use the water taxi and other transportation options to get there, but yes, there is a large parking lot across the street.
Okay.
Yes.
Any further questions, Commissioner Sternman?
Keep in mind another thing, Behemar has public parking, quote, public parking right next door too, so that's another thing to keep in mind.
Okay, Commissioner Glassman?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So I just want to emphasize something that I think I haven't heard enough of with regards to this project. We are constantly looking for ways to get people out of their cars and to take other modes of transportation. We just heard Matt say that they did over a million rides. It's not that people are going to park across the street, Mayor, to go use this water taxi, it's that people are going to come from all over to get to this destination. You have to remember that adjacent to this destination, we have the Behemar project coming, just to the, just to the north, that Marina Village is getting ready to open soon, all those restaurants, the ferry that's coming from Fisher Island that's going to be renovated again into a restaurant, bar area, entertainment complex. So, and then you're going to have also the renovation and the incredible project on the International Swimming Hall of Fame. So people are going to want to really come to this part of the Barrier Island, because what we're doing in that part of the island is going to be attracting people that necessarily haven't come before. Behemar doesn't really attract a lot of people now, but that will change. International Swimming Hall of Fame is going to bring people because of the pools and then because of what's going to be happening in the future there. So you have to look at this area holistically, you have to realize that this is a transportation hub by water. That's, that's the key thing, that it's not that people are going to park here to get on, people are going to arrive here from the water. And the thousands of people that use the water taxi during our major Barrier Island events will be using this hub. So I think this is exactly what we need to do on a relatively small parcel of land that nobody really seems to say that they need. So that's, I just wanted to emphasize that as well.
Okay, great, thank you. Any other comments or questions from the commission?
Mayor, so the only thing I just want to bring out is the one concern that was raised, which was one of mine, and that had to do which was one of mine, and that had to do with the future use for the fire department. So, you know, I'm comfortable now with their statement that they don't foresee a need with this, because I am always a little hesitant when we're giving away public land under a long-term lease, because I never know what our future use might be. But I think that the chief's comments have brought me some degree of comfort with that. So I'm happy to move forward with this the way it is. I think this is otherwise a great amenity. It looks like it's going to be a great building. And I agree with everybody's comments that, you know, this is a, the water taxi has always been a great way of moving people from downtown out to the beach, particularly when we have our events like Tortuga and things like that, the Boat Show. You know, it's always been my preferred method. I park downtown, and I take the water taxi out there. And I think it relieves a lot of the traffic along La Solis. So again, I'm a huge fan of alternative means of transportation. So I think it'd be a great project.
Okay, great. Did someone introduce the resolution? It hasn't introduced. Okay. So could you please call the roll?
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, providing notice of intent pursuant to section 255.065 Florida statutes to enter into a comprehensive agreement for a qualifying project to construct, operate, and maintain a water taxi terminal on city-owned property located at 1001 Seabreeze Boulevard, Fort Lauderdale, Florida, and to accept other proposals for the same project declaring that the above city-owned lands and any improvements thereon are not needed for governmental purposes, and providing notice of intent to offer the above property for lease under competitive conditions pursuant to section 255.065 Florida statutes and section 8.09 of the city charter and providing for an effective date. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and R six is approved. R seven? Thank you, gentlemen.
Mayor, there's two amendments to this, not the resolution, yeah, it's to the resolution that I need the City Commission to consider. And they're to section 18A, Roman numeral two, and Roman numeral five. The amendment is, and Roman numeral two is to acknowledge the amendment to the investment policy took place today rather than the date that's stated in the resolution. And there's a Scrivener's error with regards to document versus document, and that's subsection five.
So this would be an amendment to the resolution?
Yes, sir.
So, as stated by the city attorney, amending R six, would someone like to introduce that resolution?
Introduce as amended?
R seven, sir.
Oh, R seven. I'm sorry. I apologize. R seven. Okay.
Still introduces amended?
So R seven has now been introduced as amended. Any questions with regard to this item? There being none, would someone like to call the roll?
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, authorizing the issuance and sale of the city's water and sewer revenue bonds, series 2023, in the aggregate principal amount of not exceeding $550 million consisting of water and sewer revenue bonds, series 2023A, and water and sewer revenue bonds, series 2023B, for the purpose of paying all of a portion of the cost of improvements of the city's water and sewer system, including without limitation to the extent permissible under the code, reimbursement to the city for the cost of such improvements advanced by the city from the internal funds, and paying the cost of issuance of the series 2023 bonds, fixing the form and denominations of the said series 2023 bonds, and providing for the fixing of the principal amounts, dates, rates of interest, maturity dates, and redemption provisions of said series 2023 bonds by the city manager with the parameters set forth herein, authorizing the execution, directing the authentication, and delivery of said 2023 bonds, finding necessity for negotiated sale of the series 2023 bonds, approving the form and authorizing the execution and delivery of a purchase contract, and delegating to the city manager the award of the series 2023 bonds to the underwriters within the parameters set forth herein, authorizing the use of a preliminary official statement and execution and delivery of an official statement with respect to said series 2023 bonds, approving uncertificated book entry-only registration of said series 2023 bonds with the depository trust company, providing for the application of the proceeds of said series 2023 bonds, appointing a paying agent and bond register and disclosure dissemination agent from the 2023 bonds, approving the form and authorizing the execution of a paying agent and bond register agreement, combining to provide continuing disclosure in connection with such series 2023 bonds in accordance with Securities and Exchange Commission Rule 15C2-12, and approving the form and authorizing the execution, delivery of a disclosure dissemination agent agreement with respect thereto, authorizing other required actions, amending resolution number 03-29 adopted by the City Commission on February 18, 2003, and providing an effective date. Commissioner Glassman?
Could you repeat that?
I knew you were going to say that. You steal my, you steal my filter.
Okay. I'm going to vote yes.
Okay, thank you.
Because I don't want you to repeat it.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes, yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and I want to applaud the commission for moving ahead and knowing that our city continues to be committed to improving its water and sewer systems, and this is a major step forward. All I know is I got to spend an afternoon signing those bonds. But anyway, R eight, resolution approving and authorizing the execution of the Water and Infrastructure Finance and Innovation Act loan agreement with the United States Environmental Protection Agency for stormwater improvement projects in seven neighborhoods as follows: River Oaks, Dorsey Riverbend, Durs, Progresso Village, Victoria Park, Merle's Manners, and Southeast Isles. Do I hear someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduced.
It's been introduced. Please call the roll.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, authorizing a load in the aggregate principal amount of not exceeding $119,994,028 for the purpose of providing funds to pay together with other legally available monies, the cost of certain improvements to the city's stormwater utility system, accepting the proposal of the United States Environmental Protection Agency, acting by and through the administrator of the Environmental Protection Agency to provide such loan-making certain funds and determinations as to the WIFIA loan, authorizing the issuance of a promissory note to evidence and secure the city's payment obligations under the WIFIA loan, and authorizing the execution and delivery thereof, designated the WIFIA loan and the WIFIA note as alternative parity debt under resolution number 22-58 adopted by the City Commission on March 5, 2022, as supplemented and amended, and pledging the pledge funds as the source of payment and security therefore, approving the form and authorizing the execution, delivery of the WIFIA loan agreement, providing for no personal liability, authorizing other required actions, providing for severability of invalid provisions in an effective date. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and that resolution's approved. And I just want to say, this is an amazing opportunity for the city to be able to take advantage of this WIFIA program, W-I-F-I-A, to try to accelerate our efforts to improve our infrastructure in these projects that we've identified. So congratulations, city manager, for moving forward on this. R nine, you wanted to remove, correct?
Yes, thank you, and yes, R nine removed.
Okay. R ten, quasi-judicial resolution vacating a utility easement that is 168 feet in length, with a varied width ranging from 14 feet to 7 feet, located at 111 Southwest Third Avenue, Nugent Avenue Parking LLC. Anyone wishing to speak must be sworn in. The commission will announce any site visits, communications, or expert opinions received, and make them a part of the record. Commissioner Herbst, do you have any disclosures?
No disclosures.
Vice Mayor?
Would Robert Lockery on this?
I don't recall talking to anybody on this, but if I did, it would have been with Mr. Lockery or Mr. Shine.
I'll echo that, Mayor. I don't recall talking to anybody. If I did, it would have been Mr. Shine or Mr. Lockery.
And Commissioner Glassman?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I met with Robert Lockery on August 31, 2023, regarding the property only. That's it.
And Commissioner Sturman?
Robert Lockery.
Put your microphone on, please. Robert Lockery, I believe it was July 24. Okay. Mr. Shine, you've signed up to speak, but for questions only. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? There being none, would someone move to close public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and public hearing on R 10 is now closed. Someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduced.
Please call the roll.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, vacating a portion of the existing 14-foot retained utilities, described in official records, book 17411, page 610 of the public records of Broward County, Florida, said portion being adjacent to lots 8, 9, 16, and 17 in the west, half adjacent to the lot 10, and the north 15 feet of Lot 11, together with the east half adjacent to the north 18 feet of Lot 15, block 17, town of Fort Lauderdale, according to the plot thereof, as recorded in plot book B, page 40 of the public records of Dade County, Florida, located west of Southwest Third Avenue, north of Southwest Second Street, east of Southwest Fourth Avenue, and south of West Broward Boulevard. All said lands situate lying and being the city of Fort Lauderdale, Broward County, Florida, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and R 10 is now approved. R 11, quasi-judicial de novo hearing, consideration of a resolution for a certificate of appropriateness for demolition. Anyone wishing to speak must be sworn in. Commission will announce any site visits, communications, or expert opinions received, and make them a part of the record. Commissioners, Herbst, do you have any disclosures?
None.
Vice Mayor?
None.
I don't recall any. Commissioner Glassman?
I do, Mayor, but I was under the impression that this was going to be deferred.
Is Mr. Shine here?
I know about 11.
Mr. Shine, is this being deferred?
No, this one.
Are you asking for it to be deferred?
We are asking for a deferral, yes.
Did I have any indications to that?
I don't know. Maybe I know because it's in my district. I get a little heads up every once in a while.
We had a very brief phone call last week.
Yes, we did.
All right. So you're asking it to just be deferred?
Yes.
To any particular day?
I think two weeks date certain is fine, October 3.
October 3. So there's a motion to, does someone like to introduce a motion to defer R 11 to October 3 meeting?
Introduced.
Is that sufficient time to advertise this? Mr. Spence?
I think we're okay with the actual deferral of the item.
To October 3?
Yes.
Okay. All righty, so was the item moved? Do I hear a second?
Second.
It moved to second to defer this item to October 3. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Mr. Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and so R 11 is now deferred to October 3. See you then. Okay, moving on to public hearings. We have PH 1, Public Hearing Resolution Approving a Comprehensive Agreement with the Hall of Fame Partners LLC for a qualified project that includes the construction, maintenance, and operation of the east and west buildings at the International Swimming Hall of Fame Complex located at 501 Seabreeze Boulevard, approving various appended agreements as to form, approving the leasing of city-owned property located at 501 Seabreeze Boulevard, Fort Lauderdale, Florida, to the Hall of Fame Partners LLC, and authorizing the city manager to execute the agreements and related documents, and declaring the city's intent pursuant to city charter section 8.13 to lease city-owned property. Stephanie Toothaker, is Stephanie Toothaker here? Do you want, well, I see Susan Grant is here. Who's going to make a present? I assume there's going to be a presentation here?
Yeah, I was going to do a brief introduction and then leave it over to the Hall of Fame Partners.
Go right ahead.
Okay. This is Susan Grant, Assistant City Manager. Good evening again. Qualified project pursuant to Florida statutes. It was an unsolicited proposal that was received in September of 2020. It was accepted and advertised in January of 2021. An interim agreement was entered into in October of 2021, and we're bringing to you tonight the comprehensive agreement. It would include a ground lease to Hall of Fame Partners, who would then construct improvements. That would include that west building, the east building, seawall, a public dock, and an ocean rescue building. The city then would sign a master facilities lease to lease those improvements from them. We would sublease that to Hall of Fame, the Swimming Hall of Fame, and there'd be sub-subleases. And those subleases would generate revenue that would offset the city's payment under that master facilities lease. And they'll go into more of that structure when they make their presentation. I'll be available for questions, as well as, if you notice, one of your exhibits is PFM, the city's financial advisor, is here to answer questions on that financial analysis. And Ed Dion, who represented the city in the legal area in the negotiations, is also here. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Hall of Fame Partners to make their presentation.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Stephanie Toothaker, on behalf of CGHP Hall of Fame Partners, I want to just also introduce my co-counsel, Chris Smith, and Jennifer Drake, who are also involved in this project. We are, as Susan said, we originally submitted the unsolicited proposal in 2020. It's been a really long journey to get here. I would be remiss if I didn't say thank you to all the hard work from staff, from Susan, the city attorney's office, the city manager's office, all of the consultants that were involved. And we really appreciate the opportunity to be here with you this evening. This is a-
About how much time do you think you need for your presentation?
We've got a couple people talking, so if you could give us 15, I think.
20 minutes.
20.
20 minutes?
Mario says 20.
Okay. And welcome, Senator Smith.
Thank you so much. So with Hall of Fame Partners is Cory Olson, Hensel Phelps. I know you're very familiar with Hensel Phelps. Hensel Phelps has been on this peninsula for a very long time. They built your pools for you, have delivered those pools. They built the dive tower. Those have already been delivered to the city, and we've had a lot of really exciting events surrounding that. And Cory Olson and Mario Caprini joined together to create CGHP, which is Hall of Fame Partners, which submitted the unsolicited proposal. As I said, this has been a very long journey. We are very excited to be here this evening. We've got some, a lot of detail to share with you. It's been, you know, a lot, a lot, a lot, a lot of meetings. We've also spent a lot of time in the community, and I want to just touch on that really quickly. We did make multiple presentations to the Central Beach Alliance, both to their board and to the general membership. We also did a meeting to the Venetian, and we included, with all of those meetings, we reached out to other community stakeholders and HOAs to invite them to those meetings. So there were other neighborhoods that were also part of those meetings. Those happened throughout 2021, 2022, and of course, we've had ongoing discussions through that time. I'm going to stop here. I would like to just say that our entire team of consultants is here to answer any questions that you may have about the agreement, about the project. Once again, this is a comprehensive agreement. This is not a site plan. When we are done with a comprehensive agreement, we will start the DRC process. So we have a long way to go. We will, of course, engage with the community through that entire process. When we develop that site plan, start the DRC process, go back to the Central Beach Alliance and the other community stakeholders, and make the presentations and work on the site plan at that time.
Can I ask you a quick question? Your presentation to the Venetian was in October. Was a vote taken, or was it just a presentation?
It was just a presentation. And the project that is before you, the comprehensive agreement, has not changed since that time.
Okay.
It just took us a very long time to work through the legalities of bringing the agreement forward.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Mario Caprini. I'm the president of Capital Group P3, and I'm also the president of CGHP Development with my partner here, Cory.
Yeah, Cory Olson, Hensel Phelps. I'm the operations manager here in South Florida. So Stephanie explained, you know, we created the partnership with Capital Group here in 2019, and that's where you see the CGHP Developments team. And when you see Hall of Fame Partners, that's really our single-purpose entity for this project. So when you see Hall of Fame Partners, that is synonymous with CGHP Developments. You'll see along the bottom, we have our other design consultants listed. So a good mix of nationally recognized names, along with good local folks as well. Michelle. So without going through the whole history, Stephanie touched on it a little bit. I think we all know the significance of the aquatic peninsula to the city of Fort Lauderdale. First Olympic-sized swimming pool in 1928, and then it was in 1963 deed restricted for the Swimming Hall of Fame to be on that property. So that's going to be important about, when we talk about the structure of the deal that we had to come up with in order to make this work. And then we do have the chairman of the board of the Hall of Fame with us this evening. He's going to come up and say a few words in a little while, Bill Kent. But Bill personally took the charge to recommit the Swimming Hall of Fame to the city of Fort Lauderdale in 2018. There was some long discussions about potentially moving that to California, and it was really that recommitment to the city, I think, that led to the impetus of the additional improvements to the Aquatic Center.
They were having a down moment.
Yes, yes. So it came to their senses, right, once Bill took over. So- Once Bill took over. So, and then from there, after that renewal, is when the aquatic improvements started directly with the city. So go ahead, Michelle. So this is just kind of to give people a recap of what's been done and where we're headed with this. If we think of this in three phases, the first pieces that were done were shown in the yellow here. So that was a replacement of the training pool, the competition pool in the center, and then the dive pool was moved to the left. And it was actually about my first month here, back in Fort Lauderdale, where I went to the groundbreaking ceremony, and the mayor assured everyone that we would have the world's first 27-meter dive tower, when I thought he was crazy and out of his mind at that time.
Did you say that out loud?
And I did think that, I think we all maybe thought that at the time. But certainly, the vision of that is what led to, you know, where we are today. And so, the other piece of that then was, we needed to also replace the locker room buildings, and the city did not have the funding at the time. So we created the partnership with Capital Group in 2019 with the intent to submit an unsolicited proposal to finance that as a separate contract. It just happened to be that the city came into the park bonds fund, and were able to also reallocate some other funds. And so the funds weren't needed, but we did move forward with the unsolicited proposal and completed that as a second contract. And so really, as we were constructing these facilities, you know, really starting at the end of 19, going into 20, we recognized, if we're going to replace the Swimming Hall of Fame, now is the time to do it. We have to capitalize on the momentum that's taking place. The city's made the commitment in order to invest in redoing the pools, and here you can see how that turned out. So, you know, it's really only been open here, calendar year 2023, they've already had some exciting events. We had the, kind of the kicking off ceremony in, I believe it was late January, early February, and you can really see what that's done for the peninsula. So, coming off the heels of this, we recognized there was a pretty big challenge that we had to go solve, related to some of the deed restrictions and the other things Mario's going to explain here. So go ahead, Mario.
All right, thanks Cory. So, they turned this over as practically mission impossible. First, they tell me, this has got to be a great iconic building, and obviously with a team like Architect Tony on board, that wasn't too difficult. But the next step was to make ISHAF financially viable in the long term and not depend on just donations, but create an economic engine, a machine, that would generate activity and create income for ISHAF and create a stable future for its operation. And then they wanted to make sure that there would be no upfront cost to the city, and that all the costs of this project would be subsidized by the private sector. And not to forget, the last one, which is, develop the project for the benefit of the city. So this was quite a challenge. I kind of looked at Cory, and he introduced me to Bill Kent and the folks at ISHAF, and I said, okay, let's tackle this. This is quite a challenge, and I'm up for it. So here's the vision that came out of that whole process. So with that, we're just going to show you a 30-second video. So some of the key elements of the east building, obviously, we have the welcome center of the museum, this is going to be the main point of contact to enter, and then there are going to be shared space between the museum and the food and beverage, and we're going to have a cafe that's going to serve also lunch and dinner, and turn into a bar in the evening. We'll have a floor rider, which is a surfing machine right next to that. Second floor is going to be a public terrace, and we created a little opening so you can watch all your friends wipe out while they're surfing. And on the second and third floor, on the third and fourth floor, because of the amount of activity and international partners that the Hall of Fame has, they all needed a small office space, so we decided to look at who are the best operators in the country when it relates to shared office. And also the fact that all the entrepreneurs that are living on the barrier island had really no option to have any office space. And finally, the public access to the rooftop is going to have views of the intercoastal, views of the beach, and it's going to be also available for people to host their little events. On the west building, well, the two key components is obviously the museum, but I'm very happy and pleased to announce that we have an aquarium coming to Fort Lauderdale with my friend Rich that's in the room here, and his partners that are in California and elsewhere in the country. So, we're very excited because it's going to be very complimentary. We're going to redesign the third floor and have the aquarium and ISHAF share the floor and have their own different entrances and create a lot of cross-marketing between them. We will have a teaching pool for every child a swimmer program that Bill will talk about. We have a dryland, because you have the highest dive tower in the western hemisphere, but in order to be able to train, they can only jump twice a week, so they have a need a place to train, we have that included in it. We added two levels of parking that are going to be tucked in there with lifts, so it's going to be fully valet service. We're going to have a little cafe that's going to be focused on catering to the yachting community, and obviously, we have the public dock that's going to serve the water taxi for my friend Bill, and also other water taxi and transportation service, and open to the public to be able to pick up and drop off any people. And on the fourth floor, we have the event center that's going to have a capacity to hold 500 people for dinner, 1,100 people for a standing event, and we're also going to use it for entertainment, so it's not just a traditional center. And the Piazzetta Resistance is on the roof, we're going to have a rooftop restaurant, which, we will not announce who the chef is today, I'm going to leave that to our people when the time comes, but we will have a three, probably a three-star Michelin restaurant on the rooftop of this restaurant, which will be the only one in the state of Florida. So we're very excited about this. Now, here's a couple of images from the aquarium, this is a very well-experienced, we send a separate package to you guys to look who they are, we have financial history on them, they're a great group, and they have a lot of capacity, so this is going to be the first of probably many projects they're going to be doing with us in the state of Florida.
Cory?
Yeah.
Go back to that slide again. This is both virtual and real, correct?
Yes.
Do you want to explain that?
It's a state-of-the-art aquarium, so you're going to have the real, you know, aquarium with fish, and the kids will be able to touch some of the animals and all that, but we're going to have state-of-the-art digital aquarium, so you're going to walk into a room like you're at the bottom of the ocean, and all the animals, you're going to have digital, augmented reality, all kinds of very, very cool systems are going to be installed in the aquarium.
And that's really the future, you know, even with what we were looking at with the Swimming Hall of Fame and their exhibits, a lot of it was going to be digital, interactive, so that the exhibits can be updated and changed and really keep the interest level up. So, a lot of shared resources with that, so.
Thank you.
You bet. So, the next piece of this is really something that was a little bit, we'll say, residual from the original Aquatic Center project, in that the ocean rescue, or the lifeguards for the beach, have never really had a home. They've been bouncing around different facilities on the beach, and I think, you know, the last place they really called home was up under the grandstands before they were condemned. And so we worked with city staff to come up with a solution for them, and we have them in this building here, on the south side, right behind the dive tower, you can kind of see that in the foreground on the right-hand side there. And that'll really provide them some storage space on the ground, their offices on the second floor, but this connects to the pool deck, and so this also gave us an opportunity to add some more space for the athletes, so you'll have a covered deck on three, and then an open deck on four that the Aquatic Center will be able to utilize as well.
All right, thanks. Now, the important part of the public purpose, so we're going to improve all of the seawall, we're going to have, obviously, ocean rescue, and let's not forget, they're looking out for us at the beach, they're saving our lives, so we've got to house them properly. We'll have the parking decks open to the public, we'll have access stairs, so if you walk off the main street, you'll be able to turn right and go all around the peninsula, go up the stairs, go into the balcony section and have views of the intercoastal, views of the city, and also the rooftop on the east side, you'll have direct views of the ocean, the new park that you're building, and also the intercoastal. So, and the public access to the dock is going to be not only for water taxi, but also for public to pick up and drop off, and obviously, we're going to be catering to the yachting community, and we're really looking forward to that.
Okay, a couple other components, I believe Mario mentioned the dryland training, so this is up under the west building, under the grandstands. This, again, is something that the city didn't necessarily have the money for when the initial Aquatic Center was built, or the 27-meter dive tower, and so those athletes need a place to train. And here you'll see the foam pit that'll have the, you know, the trampolines and the trapeze swings, and so that gives them a place to train there. And then in the center is a teaching pool, and that's really intended for not only private swimming lessons that can be a revenue source for the city, but is really going to be the focus of the Swimming Hall of Fame and their Every Child a Swimmer program, in that the more financially stable the Hall of Fame is, the more services that they can provide to the local kids there. And then on the far right-hand side is the grandstands. So again, the city did not necessarily have the funds at the time of the aquatic complex for the grandstands, so we have this beautiful $7 million tower, and we'll have to watch on lawn chairs without these grandstands. So, we found a way to work those in, so there's 500 seats down low on the pool deck, and then there also up above, you'll see some seats that come out of the VIP suites of the museum. Okay, so Susan described the lease structure when she did the introduction here, and we wanted to put together a visual to really help kind of clarify this, because it's, quite honestly, it's a lot of paper that took us the two years to get here. So, with that deed restriction on the land, we had to find a way in order to leave the land in possession of the city and still be able to finance new improvements for the city. So, the first lease that exists is a ground lease from the city of Fort Lauderdale to the Hall of Fame Partners, which, again, is just the single-purpose entity of Capital Group Developments. That's a nominal lease, where we then arrange for the financing, and we will finance the entire value of the project for a master facility lease. So Hall of Fame Partners will then lease the improvements back to the city, and from there, the city will sublease to the Swimming Hall of Fame. And you'll see two boxes on this line, it's really been the museum to this date, okay? But because of their 501(c)(3) status, they could not take in the revenue and needed to create a second entity for that. So they've done that here recently, they have the ISHAF Properties LLC that will then, that's a wholly-owned subsidiary of the ISHAF Museum, and then they will sublease to all the tenant, to all the tenants below that are really lease-based revenue and revenue shares, okay? So Mario's got kind of a simple example to capture this here.
So for the non-real estate people, a simple analogy is, we all know that the city builds parking decks, and we all know that they expect the public or companies to go rent the parking deck. So think of this project as a big parking deck, and then we are going to provide all the tenants, whether it's a university, a big adjacent office building, or whatnot, so like that, that they are the ones that are ultimately, from the private sector, pay off all of the costs of the project here.
Okay. So that's how the leases are structured, let's talk about how the money flows. So, if you see at the top, there is the city of Fort Lauderdale, they are first in line. So, you know, going through all the business models that we presented, and having the third parties, you know, Susan had mentioned PFM had performed the third-party reviews of that, they were most comfortable with the lease-based tenants, and so all the parties have agreed that 100% of the lease-based revenue will first go to the city.
That includes parking?
Yeah. Yeah. And from there, there's a waterfall model that we have shown here, and the next $2 million that comes in after the leases, so whether it's revenue share, advertising, entertaining, whatever comes in, the next $2 million goes to the city of Fort Lauderdale, with the exception of the items listed to the right, and that is really ISHAF generating their own funds. So when they sell tickets, when they have their own fundraisers, when they sell advertising in the space of their walls, they get to keep that money to operate their own business, but all the other money that's coming in to the peninsula, the first $2 million goes to the city after the leases. And from there, it's a 50-50 split, and half of that goes to the city and half of that goes to ISHAF.
So, the next part is pretty exciting, because you've got to think of the economic impact, we created a destination, now you look at the power of the economic impact of this project. During construction, we're talking about creating 1,472 jobs, we're talking about $304 million of economic output, we're talking about the average 30-year of property sales tax coming in, $14 million in property tax revenue, $78 million in state and sales tax, $13 million in property and county sales tax. And why did we think it was important to mention those others than the revenues coming to the city? Is because we are going to go to the state, and we are going to go to the county, and we are going to show them how much that will contribute to their bottom line, and we're going to ask them to reinvest into this project. And we already have feelers, and we had preliminary meetings, and we've had a good reception when it comes to that. And obviously, this economic impact's been done by a professional team, and I think Kevin's here in the audience, if ever we have questions about that. But the most important part is, we're creating 771 permanent jobs. We're going to have 77 million a year, every year, year after year, and these revenues are going to go up by 3% a year. So I think we, in the package, in the mission that we were given, the outcome is, we have answered the mail, we have provided the iconic destination, we have provided the model for ISHAF to create its financial independence from everybody else, and there are going to be, there are going to be no upfront costs to the city to build this project, and we have provided plenty of services for the community at large in this project. So with that, I'm going to turn it over back to Stephanie.
So as I said, we have our entire team here, my co-counsel is here with me, we're happy to answer any questions that you have. We would ask that you support the comprehensive agreement this evening, to allow us to move forward to a site plan, DRC process, and we look forward to engaging with you, the commission, and of course, the community with that process. Thank you.
Before I open it up to the commission, there are a number of people have signed up to speak, so I'd like to call them.
Mayor, actually, before we get to that, I'd like to hear from our financial advisors, just, if they could just come up and discuss their review and sort of elaborate on that.
Sure, go ahead. Who's going to speak on our behalf? You just turned it off.
There we go. Sorry, I said press here. Yeah, Kevin Plenzler, PFM. As Susan mentioned, we are, PFM provides financial advisory services to the city. As part of the process here, we reviewed a lot of the information provided by the developer regarding the assumptions built into their pro forma modeling. So we did a detailed analysis, and I believe inside the packet that you have there is a, you know, a four or five-page-long memo that details our analysis. So what we did is, we kind of looked at the information provided, did a detailed analysis of rental rates associated with retail and office space in the one-mile and three-mile market, which is where this project's located, and wanted to validate the assumptions within that pro forma, and then ran a series of sensitivity analyses to look at what-if scenarios. Note that the what-if scenarios does not include this additional revenue of the aquarium, so what you have before you is really without an additional one-to-one, I believe it's about $1.1 million in additional revenue that's projected.
Could you just touch on, for everybody else's edification, the sensitivity analysis and what that means?
Sure. Yeah, so the sensitivity analysis that we did, we really looked at, you know, think about turning on and off switches on potential revenue available, so we did an analysis looking at what if vacancy increased by 10%, or what if the rental rates that were perceived or projected didn't occur, and they were at 90%. We also looked at, one item in the pro forma involved a series of dive shows that were, you know, approximately a 36-week type program that would have regular dive show activity. There was very little comparables for a project like that, so we did a sensitivity analysis just essentially removing that revenue completely, or even reducing it by 50% to see what that did to the, basically, the net operating income of the project. So it gave kind of a, essentially giving you a range of risk, where if things worked out exactly as planned, you'd see the outcome, and if things did not work out, what would that mean in terms of a loss of revenue and potential exposure to the city in terms of additional rent payments that wouldn't be covered by all the lease revenue projected? So that, we provided that range within the materials that you have before you. And, you know, and that doesn't necessarily mean the project is good or bad, what it does is, it gives you a risk profile and understanding the what-if scenarios if things work out or don't work out as projected.
Commissioner, have you got questions? And thank you, and that's very important, because as the team involved knows, I've never been a fan of this project historically to this point, and it's because, as your sensitivity analysis shows, there's been substantial risk. You know, the number one thing that a P3 is designed to do, the reason we do P3s- You know, the number one thing that a P3 is designed to do, the reason we do P3s, is risk transfer to the private sector. And I've been concerned throughout this process because I've reviewed it early on when it was submitted to me when I was in the auditor's role, and I was never a big fan of it then. The city is taking on substantial risk in terms of guaranteeing the debt on it. So we all need to be clear about that. The city guarantees the debt. If the rents off the project are insufficient to cover the debt service, the city is responsible for that. I will say that with the addition of the aquarium, your sensitivity analysis shows that our exposure, I think, drops substantially. I know that's not part of the presentation, but I understand.
Yeah, I did some back-of-the-envelope math about that, and that probably reduces the risk by about 30 to 35%, just based on what you currently have, you know, in your packet today.
Right. So that was a huge part of me getting somewhat comfortable with this project. So, and again, the team knows where I've been on this all along. I try and be transparent with them. And this has helped me get to a point where I think the risk level is something that I think is easier to swallow. So, but thank you, I appreciate that. And by the way, I just want to appreciate the work that you've done. I think this is great. I, you know, applaud the city for reaching out and doing this. This is really the kind of financial analysis that I think we need to have on every one of our P3s. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. So let us, is there anyone else from staff or on behalf of the, on behalf of your team that wants to speak? Okay, well, then we'll go right to public hearing then. I'll announce three names at once so that you can be prepared to move forward and be prepared to speak. Bill Kent, followed by Ann Hilmer, followed by Rick Walser. Oh, only for questions, so we'll hold that back. John Roth. How are you, sir?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Vice Mayor and all of your commissioners. I don't know how you do what you do.
We do it for you, Bill. We do it for you.
I believe you. Your approval of this project represents a rebirth of the International Swimming Hall of Fame. It's really just that simple. All 17 members of our Board of Directors have reviewed in detail over the last three years all of the continuing, evolving parts of this program, and we fully support what's happening here. In terms of a little history, there was over 20 years where the Swimming Hall of Fame leadership was trying to leave Fort Lauderdale. And you should also remember that there's only really one Swimming Hall of Fame for the entire world. It's not just another little deal. It's the center of the world of aquatics and the relationship between aquatic activity and the human race. So it has a lot of significance way beyond just the limits of City of Fort Lauderdale. In 2015, our 50-year lease from the 1960s expired, and as Corey mentioned earlier, the stands had been condemned. So there was a complete cessation of all activities as far as competitive events and all that sort of thing. But then I accidentally became chairman of the board in 2017 from the swimming pool industry, not an aquatics guy, but somehow or another I got roped into this volunteer situation. And the first thing on my mind was renewing the lease with the city. And in 2018, we were able to finalize and sign the 30-year lease that's in place right now. And that started a cascade of positive things where you've now spent over $50 million updating and the pools. And with the mayor's inspiration, the 27-meter dive tower came to be, and I'll never forget that event. So really, where we are right now tonight, our best is about yet to come. We've been able to refocus the purpose of the Swimming Hall of Fame into three distinct areas. One is to inspire everyone who comes in contact with us through the induction of Olympic heroes and aquatic contributors. In the same room, in 10 days from now, we're inducting Michael Phelps into the Swimming Hall of Fame, along with Missy Franklin and another 10 people. That's very, hopefully, going to be a very successful event. We also immortalize the relationship between the human race and aquatic activity with our library. It's a one-of-a-kind library in the entire world. There's nothing like it. And we've got the world's greatest historian in Bruce Wago still working with us. And then thirdly, we've been able to resurrect through, imagine is the third word, imagine a world without drowning. There was a program started in the 1970s called Every Child a Swimmer by one of the founders of local leaders that helped found the Swimming Hall of Fame here, Judge G. Harold Martin. And that program fell into disrepair and pretty much disappeared. And when I became chairman of the board, my one spiritual mission was to bring it back alive. And it is, I'm pleased to report to you that it is now alive and well. We are getting a lot of donations, and then we are teaching the children from families that can't afford swim lessons how to swim. It's a really day-to-day fun thing for me. So again, we highly support this program.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Ann Hilmer, followed by John Roth, followed by Mary Furtig.
Good evening, Ann Hilmer, 621 Idlewild Drive. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of myself and several residents on Idlewild Drive. Please remember that you, our commissioners, are the stewards of our community. As you consider this comprehensive agreement, forget about the site plan, look at the comprehensive agreement. Remember, we need to, we need to have the right checks and balances. Keep in mind both the benefits and the detriments or liabilities to the community. This agreement has been crafted under cloak of darkness to the citizens, but with the city staff working with the developers for two years. This comprehensive agreement places parking under the total control of the developer or lessee, places all concessions under the lessee's control, provides revenue of 3% on rents, if I read it correctly, but nothing on events to the city, and gives the lessee the right to, for any restaurant, sports bar, tavern, or water facility. No one would deny the need for some buildings on this site, but 334,000 square feet is an overreach. A multi-story parking garage on the intercoastal, we were told this parking would be for the public, but the city has no control over that. If you agree to this comprehensive agreement tonight, you remove the ability to remove parts of it. Please defer this to examine it more closely with the citizenry in mind. The idea that you get 169 pages of information five days before you're expected to vote on it is ludicrous, and it's ludicrous to present that to the citizens of this city in five days. And I also have an email that I received today from one of our residents who was talking about the loss of full control over the parking, the loss of full control over cell towers, antennas, and digital fixed signage, and loss of full control of all concession and rights to operation and timing. And he also referenced an email that he sent on March 14th of 2023 to Commissioner Glassman asking for more detailed information on this project and asking for, to be provided with a lead contact to the project for the City of Fort Lauderdale. And he got no response. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
John Roth.
Good evening. Okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, John Roth. I live at 333 Sunset Drive. I will read my comments, and I will give a copy of them to the clerk. I refer to the comprehensive agreement, Article 3, Description of the Qualified Project. There are three big-ticket items in here. The foundation for the buildings, the features to restrict, resist the storm damage, and features to resist sea level rise, which has been previously mentioned, that they were going to take care of. Regarding the foundations, all the things under the ground can cost upwards of 30% of the total building cost. The bigger, the taller the building is, more finite foundation cost. The more the unstable or weak soil, the bigger the cost to hold the same load. And I have a lot of experience in the soils there in this area. The proposed language in the project agreement allows change orders with pass-through costs from either party. This means that the city's costs could easily spiral upward. For example, if the contractor claims unknown soils, just recently found, this is after the project has started, then that justifies them increasing the foundation costs via change order, which the city has to pay for. Under the current agreement, the city is accepting, the one that's proposed, is accepting an unsecure, an untrustworthy budget number. Because if the contractor already knows something else, somebody else will pay for later discovery costs regarding the soils, then the project might be underbid a little bit. The contract language should not allow the extra costs to be passed on to the city. They know about the soils. Contractor Hansel Phillips well knows the geological structure. A few more test borings and a piling plan should be locked in, locked in before any acceptance of the final estimated cost of the qualified project. Both parties will be financially secure if similar work for projected income streams is as thorough, also as thoroughly developed. Plan B that I have is to reduce foundation costs, to remove some of the heavy parking decks and deliver the huge influx of visitors on championship swimming days via the water taxi stop already planned at the end of the peninsula. And if you could reduce the big costs on the, for the peak days, then you could have a financial winner in both ways. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
No questions. Next, we have Mary Furtig and John Burns.
Good evening. I'm speaking on behalf of my neighborhood association. I'm here tonight to request that this item be deferred or removed to a workshop or conference agenda, setting it for discussion and bringing forward the contract at a later meeting. Much has been made about which groups have been, have seen or not seen presentations. Idlewild is located directly across from the International Swimming Hall of Fame. Sometime around September of 2022, Stephanie Toothacre asked if we would like a presentation. At that time, I believe the project being forward was a site plan, as I've told you all before. Whenever a project with a site plan or zoning of any kind comes before our association, I just kind of leave whatever discussion, and Ann Hilmer is the point person. So in October of 2022, the Venetian was going to be holding a presentation on the project. So we determined we would send a notice to our neighborhood, and they weren't, and John Burns was kind enough to say they could come and attend that presentation. So we sent that out to the neighborhood. And some neighbors took us up, and they went back. And when they came back, all they talked about that they saw in the presentation was the buildings. Again, I removed myself from that conversation. It wasn't until the spring of 2023 that I learned from Ms. Toothacre that what would be coming to the commission was in fact not a site plan because all of the conversation had been around the buildings, but a comprehensive agreement. I informed her that I would share this with the neighbors. I thought that would probably maybe diffuse some conversations if they could see a comprehensive agreement, and I requested to be made aware of the agreement. I asked for updates periodically, requesting that the neighbors receive a copy of the comprehensive agreement with enough time to review it. I was always told that it was not ready yet. I also requested from my district commissioner's office that we be kept aware. I received an email in May saying, quote, "Staff said it won't be on the agenda for a while. I will let you know once they have a closer timeline." Imagine my shock when I saw the agenda for tonight just last Thursday and found that there are 25 attachments to this item. Those 25 attachments represent hundreds, I speculate, over 1,000 pages. I was doing the math as I was adding it up, going through it, of pages of documents. I advised the neighbors that the documents could be reviewed for the comprehensive agreement. But truthfully, I have to ask you, how many people have time to sit and go through thousands of payments, pages at the last minute? I have not been through all the pages. It was not until I received the commission agenda memo that I realized that this project is about way more than the pretty pictures or the site plan. And don't get me wrong, there is a lot of, a lot of wonderful things about this site plan. But it's also a potential annual outlay of $11 million for the city. It's also about the potential net loss to the city of $3.5 million a year. Now, the report that the speaker just came up and talked about was done in August of 2023. So now we're in September, and apparently between August, when you got, when they finished the report, and now there's an aquarium. It just seems prudent to me to go back and have them redo this, taking that into consideration, because you could still be looking at several million dollars of loss a year. So go back, have them redo it, come back, and then have the conversation. I want to know why this project's been treated differently from other P3 projects where the projects of the proposed contract were discussed in conference meetings and/or workshops, and then taken to a regular meeting for adoption. And I'm just going to reference Lockhart and One Stop, we're both done that way. Two years ago, many members of this community, including Lauderdale Tomorrow, asked for SIS City Ordinance on P3s. How many P3s have been adopted since then and still no effort to move forward with an ordinance which protects the properties and residents of the city? I reassured my neighbors that the matter moving forward was not a site plan. I told them it was a comprehensive agreement and that we would have time to review it and have input. I base those representations on what I was told. I feel really badly for my neighborhood, but I feel worse for the city as a whole. Because if you pass this here tonight, and the words of the consultant, and I'm quoting from the report before you, the report before you, done in August, this variance between the master facility lease payment and projected revenues collected could range from, yes, 162,000, that'd be great, to a negative $3,366,437. I don't believe the citizens of Fort Lauderdale have any idea what the true implications of passing this agreement could mean over the next 30 to 50 years. And by the way, some of the numbers I see on these reports aren't the same as the numbers I'm seeing on the screen. So we live in a world where coastal communities are increasingly threatened by sea level change and climate change. The associated costs of preparing and surviving those challenges cannot be minimized. Every expenditure our city makes, every loss we assume, needs to be viewed in context of what our needs are. Tonight is not the appropriate time to move forward. There are a lot of wonderful things in this project, a lot of things we all want to see. But that is not what's before you. What is before you is a contract. I actually think multiple contracts, a comprehensive agreement. And that agreement needs to be something that not you can't, just don't have to live with today, but whoever's in your seat 10 years ago, who's ever in your seat in 20 years, 30 years, and so forth. And it also needs to be something that the citizens of this city can live with. If there's going to be any potential downside, you need to work those things out. If in fact this aquarium's coming, that needs to be accounted for in the analysis. You can easily put this on a conference agenda and move it forward and bring it to the city commission meetings the way you did the other items. But quite frankly, five days' notice on a comprehensive agreement of this scale with 25 attachments representing over 1,000 pages is not sufficient for the public. Please defer this item.
Okay, thank you. John Burns, followed by Stephen DePuzo. And the last person I have is Bill Brown.
Great. John Burns, speaking on behalf of the Venetian condominium in One La Sola Circle. The P3 process is imperfect. It's like a submarine. You like it at first, but then it goes underwater, staying silent for a long time, only to emerge and then throw a lot of stuff at you, just like the release last Thursday of the comprehensive agreement and 25 exhibits with thousands of pages, charts, graphs, and construction documents. documents. Do you really expect the public to digest and grasp this information over the weekend? You'll hear claims that the public has been educated on the project. Yes, we've seen renditions and a video, but no facts, especially the level of detail which only surfaced last Thursday. The devil is in the details, so you should not be surprised at objections from neighbors. Before approving this comprehensive agreement, you should send the developer back into the community and have them communicate the facts versus a vision. One meeting a year is not enough. Here are some specific concerns regarding the comprehensive agreement. At the presentation at the Venetian on October 5th, 2022, 11 months ago, the West Building was described as five levels. When pressed to state the height of the West Building, we heard about as high as the dive tower, which is 90 feet. Exhibit 1M, A1-300, Slide 53 of the construction plans for the West Building, state the West Building will be six levels and 134 feet at the parapet. This is a 49% increase in height. The equivalent of a nine-story building has become 13 stories and not discussed with the community. And they knew this because the document, the construction document, was prepared in October of 2022. Section 308B of the comprehensive agreement states that the project needs 82 trips. How can we consider an agreement when there's not even enough trips? And the trip generation study is dated June 2020. What actual traffic data was used? How does the trip generation compare to the Broward Center versus coffee shops and restaurants where large groups gather and depart at similar times? Last night, we learned that the aquarium might be in the mix. What's the traffic impact of that, particularly on the Barrier Island? We've all seen the gridlock whenever large events let loose on the Barrier Island. Section 308E identifies a need for reserved parking spaces in the La Sola's garage. So now there's not enough trips and there's not enough parking. These issues should be communicated to the public and discussed among the commissioners. How does transportation and mobility respond? Section 308C describes the temporary relocation of the Hall of Fame museum. No details other than a red line on a, on a map of three sections of Channel Squares is discussed. Will they chop down, do I get five minutes?
Keep going.
Okay. Will they chop down the trees? Will they pave over the grass? Is this a trailer? Add parking to the grassy area that is a connector between the multimillion-dollar La Sola's Intercoastal Park and the La Sola's Oceanside Park? The museum has been closed and demolished for a number of months. Why the need for a temporary facility? This has never been explained. Channel Square is owned by the soon or will be Sunset at CRA. We have asked earlier this year for the city to designate Channel Squares a park. Tonight in item M3, you accepted property from a CRA. When will you do this for Channel Square to protect this park-like area? What's up with the Exhibits 1E, 1L, and 1P that were intentionally omitted? Inquiring public minds want to know. Again, the agreement allows for any restaurant, sports bar, or tavern in the West Building. The pro forma analysis calls for a Michelin III restaurant. Assume that there could be a large revenue difference between a tavern and a Michelin III restaurant. No one is offered to explain to the public the factors affecting the positive one hundred and sixty-two thousand dollar to the negative over three million. You had a 20-minute presentation. Do you understand all the details? You say wait for the site plan, but the exhibits include construction documents with landscaping, plumbing, elevation, safety stairwells, all kinds of minute details, and they are attached to the comprehensive agreement. There's even a request for a 20-foot roadway easement. Is this on seabreeze so we can expect one-lane nightmares during the construction period? Don't approve the agreement tonight. Send them back to the citizens to explain and for more input, offering positive, and offering a positive response. Offering a positive response to a computer-generated generated video is one thing, but understanding the impact on our Barrier Island is something we'll have to live with for a very long time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Steve DePuzo, followed by Bill Brown.
Good evening. I'll keep this short and sweet. First of all, I want to thank everyone up there for all the hard work you do. It's a very difficult task to form a city that was such a small infantile city as we were into what we're becoming. Part of this is making business decisions. The legal stuff, I leave to you guys. The stuff that makes us grow is what takes courage and insight. When I heard about the aquarium, I was overwhelmed of something like this coming to our little city. We need things to make us diverse. We need things to put us on the map. We have plenty of hotels, plenty of restaurants, but we need attractions. We need places for people to say, I want to go there. Where is there in South Florida? In the past, it's been Miami, and now it's Fort Lauderdale. This type of project and everything you're putting forward to make this happen will put Fort Lauderdale on a map for a different type of demographic. Both locals will appreciate it, students can learn from it, and tourists can visit it. So the business aspect, I will leave to everyone else. But on the aspect of forward growth, this is a project that Fort Lauderdale needs and should take into the next decades. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Brown.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members Commission, Bill Brown, President of the Central Beach Alliance. First, let me start out by saying that the Swimming Hall of Fame has always been, up till hopefully tonight, as not the hidden gem along the beach that's been referred to. I can tell you, when this first was discussed, I got a call from a Sunsetland reporter that was convinced, when she talked to me, that the museum was the East Building and was unaware that there was a West Building that was where the actual museum was. And I had to convince her to call the executive director at that time to get clarification. She called me back and she said, wow, you were right. I said, why did I tell you this was hidden gem? Most of the people never knew that there was a, the museum building in the back. The building that was demolished was to a point of non-repair, very costly, if it was, could have been repaired to the taxpayers if this proposal had not come forward. We almost lost it once. Please, please, let's not put ourselves in a position of losing this again, as the executive director of the board, the president of the board, mentioned. I believe it was talked about moving it out to California, and it almost did move. But we were able, through your help and the commission's help, to resurrect and keep it here. Presently, it was presented, we started hearing about it, seeing it. The board has met several times. I have the meeting minutes for the board meetings, minutes, the membership meetings, going all the way back to 2021. But I won't get into a lot of detail, but I will point out, the history was, historically, the Central Beach Alliance does not get involved in any of the negotiations of the interim or master comprehensive agreements. You are the, the city has the experts, the city legal, and everyone else are financial advisors to negotiate. Customers do not get involved when a business and a landlord negotiates a lease. So that's why we have typically, we always stay out of getting involved in the agreements. We will, if this is approved, then sit down with the developer once again, like we have many times, looking at the concept that we're here tonight and finalizing. We will sit down and finalize the site plan, work through that process like we always do, and if we will take a vote at that time. But at the October, I don't think, I think that's what, three minutes?
Go ahead, go ahead.
At the October 2022, the presentation, it was held at the Ritz Carlton. Commissioner Glassman, you were there. You saw, you heard the comments. And I can tell you overwhelmingly, after the video was shown, it got a round of applause from over a hundred people that were in attendance that night of CBA members. When I hear a particular president of a neighborhood association make a statement, this was all done in the dark, I can remember when this was first discussed and it was brought to my attention, I reached out to that president, and they were against it from day one because it was going to block their view of their neighborhood looking across the intercostal, intercostal waterway. I heard tonight about trips. There's not enough trips. Well, my last communication with the city staff, trips came back into play after the Bahia Mar project was reduced. The last spreadsheet that I saw that was presented to the CBA was there's 192 trips. I don't know, and Chris, give or take, okay? So I believe there are enough trips based upon that. So without going into a lot of detail, there has been transparency all along, as much as there could be by the developer and their legal counsel on the concepts, but without getting into the, really in the weeds of the master comprehensive agreement is something that I mentioned earlier, we stay out of. So please, let's not lose this again. Let's not keep this, if we keep, if we keep it, we can make this not the hidden gem, gym, but the crown jewel gem of the beach that goes along with everything else this commission and previous commissions have done with D.C. Alexander Park, the La Sola's Loop, Ocean Park, and now the Bahia Mar project, and hopefully another P3 proposal on a piece of, small piece of parcel that's, once again, just asphalt paved parking. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Okay, is there anyone else, is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this item? Okay, they're being done.
Mayor, can we get clarification on something that was just brought up about trips? Because I think that's a key point. So, Mr. Cooper, let's have a conversation about trips if we could. So I know that there were trips that were freed up by the reduction in size of the Bahia Mar project. So let's talk about what trips we have, what trips this is going to take up, and then what else we have out there. Because I know that there are a number of developers that own property that are, you know, struggling with whether or not they're going to be able to develop it. So if we need to do a study to evaluate the number of trips going forward, I want to have a conversation about that.
Yeah, so Chris Cooper, Director of Development Services. So there are approximately in the neighborhood of 150 or so trips. I can get that exact number and share that with you sometime after the meeting. I don't have that with me tonight, but there's somewhere in that range. Trips are first come, first served. So when these development applications come in, it's kind of first to the finish. So the first one that gets that eventual approval gets the trips they need. So when this project comes in through DRC, we'll evaluate the programming, what they're asking for. They'll provide a trip analysis, we'll verify that, and we'll come up with that number of trips that are needed from that pool to accommodate the project.
Do we have a back-of-the-envelope number on that?
I don't, no, I haven't seen an analysis.
Order of magnitude, 10, 20, 50, 100, 200?
So I don't, I can ask the applicant. I know in the past, we've talked in the neighborhood of 90 to 100. I don't, I don't know, that was based on kind of the perspective programming at the time, and that didn't include things like the aquarium and things like that. So there's a lot that goes into that.
I know restaurants tend to be relatively high.
Well, they do, and it's not just that this restaurant needs 20 trips, this aquarium needs 50. There's internal capture that's involved as well. So if you come to the aquarium, you may go to the restaurant. That's going to reduce the total number of trips you need. So when you put all those different uses in there, what that analysis will also do is look at the thought that people are going to come there for multiple reasons, they're going to come to the area of the beach for multiple reasons, there may be alternative modes of transportation to get to the site that could reduce the number of trips needed. So there's a really robust analysis that goes into coming up with that eventual number.
So when we run out, which we're going to shortly, right? So we know we've got projects all the way up from Parsander to AJ and everybody else up and down the beach. What do we do?
So, you know, we've been running on these kind of limited trips for a while. I mean, ever since I've been here.
Running fumes.
Yeah, about five years ago, you know, we've kind of been hovering around this number of trips. A lot of what happens on the beach is redevelopment, not development of raw land. So those trips that are associated with those existing projects, so the hotels in the North Beach, existing restaurants, there were some restaurants on Sunrise in the North Beach area that had a lot of trips that could then go to the new project that was proposed. So as long as those uses exist as part of that redevelopment, and they're not demolished within a period of time with that new development coming in as an application, they get those trips to use for their new project going forward. So those trips actually dwindle at a, at a fairly slow rate because of that, because it's a lot of redevelopment, not development of vacant land.
Okay, but assuming we run out, what is our process? What do we do next?
Yeah, we'd have to go back to the county and do a land use plan amendment to ask them for more trips. So that includes an analysis of, of all the transportation opportunities that are there. I mean, this number was created a very long time ago. So the beach has changed quite a bit. We've got things like circuit, water taxi, Uber, Lyft are more prevalent. So there's a lot of new things that weren't necessarily taken into consideration back when the trip pool was established, that an analysis now would need to be done to see what the level of service is on those roads, what the trip capacity is, and if there's any more trips that could be allocated to that pool on the beach.
Okay, so I would, I would just urge my colleagues and city manager, irrespective of what we're doing with this project, I don't want to muddy the waters, but I would request that we move forward with that study. I don't want to be doing it after we run out of trips. So we know we're getting close, so I would just urge us as a commission to undertake that study because, to your point, we're getting creative in our transportation. Let's apply that and see if we make sure that we don't stifle some of the projects that we may want to do down the road that we might want to encourage. So, thank you.
Thank you. So, Chris, don't, don't go away. To follow up with what Commissioner Herb said, so you had indicated that the site itself already has trips assigned to it, correct? Because of ongoing activities that it's always had historically?
Correct.
So this would be, it's a redevelopment, so it's to see what additional trips are going to be necessary in addition to the ones already assigned to it, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so there are a lot of new uses being associated with this project. So let me ask you this question. Even if we approve the comprehensive agreement tonight, if it's determined that the number of uses that are being contemplated here exceed the amount of trips, would that then void the whole project? Or they, or would they would have to, they would have to downsize the project in order to accommodate the trip count, correct?
Yes, potentially. They'd have to mitigate that deficit in some way. So whether it's to look at alternative modes of transportation or other ways to mitigate the trips needed for the uses that they want to have, or potentially look at reductions or changes in the programming to fall within that range of trips that they would need.
And Mayor, that's actually covered in the comprehensive agreement. I remember seeing that in there. The only question I had with respect to that, because I think it's a very good point, is that we have some say in the downsizing. So if we're going to be cutting things out of it to fit within the trip umbrella, I want to make sure that the city has some opportunity to comment on what those, right, what the downsizing is. There are certain features that I think make this project work. There are certain features that I'm less than enthusiastic about. I want to make sure that, that if we, if we're doing some downsizing, that, you know, we're comfortable with, with how that takes place.
Well, and I want to go a little bit, a little bit further than that, because we're talking about the financing of this project. So, so we have the trip issue, we have the programming of the, of the site, and now we have the financing. So clearly, if we're, if we were forced to reduce the project, it's going to reduce the finance, financial need. And then the question comes, you know, which of those, which of those components to this tower were the most, were the most income generating versus those that were not income generating? Because some of it is just open space and that doesn't generate income. So how does that, how does that impact the comprehensive agreement? I don't know if you can answer that. Maybe Mr. Spence will have to answer this. How will that impact the comprehensive agreement if any one of those components, the size, the, the, the size, the financing, the, which components will, will constitute that tower? How will we be able to reform this comprehensive agreement as we, as we, as we discover whether or not trips are really going to be available for this project?
So we've had outside counsel, Ed Dion, working on this agreement. I'll ask him to come forward and address those questions.
Ed, what are, what are your thoughts on this? How does that, how does that affect this comprehensive agreement? Because, because I don't want to pass a comprehensive agreement tonight and then find out, you know, we're going to hit a wall with this, with these trips. And then how does that fall back on all the other things that we've agreed to?
Ed Dion, Neighbors Giblin, Nickerson, on behalf of the city of Fort Lauderdale. We had major discussions about this, and in section 3.08B of the agreement, it says, in the event they're unable to get the necessary trips... "In the event they're unable to get the necessary trips, we will negotiate with them to reduce the size of the project, keeping in mind, Mayor and Commissioners, that we're going to take out the, the least financially feasible parts of it first." In other words, we'll keep in the revenue generating parts and take out the ones that won't generate as much revenue. But you won't have to amend this agreement to do that.
We don't have to amend the agreement?
No, sir.
Well, in a way we kind of do, right? Because aren't there financing obligations and?
No. See, we've got, we've got the ability to approve their plans and specifications. So if that happens, we're going to negotiate with them and we'll ultimately approve those plans going forward.
But if we can't approve those plans because of, because of restrictions that we have in terms of the trip count, you know, let's just, let's just talk, let's say there's 150 trips available and this project needs 175. Just, let's just take numbers, right? So somewhere we got to reduce some activity on the site that's going to bring it down to 150 or below, right?
Right.
Okay. So do we have to rewrite portions of the comprehensive agreement in terms of our funding obligation? Because obviously the amount of money we need to borrow is going to be less.
That's right.
Okay.
So our, our rent will be less.
Our rent, our income will be, will be less.
That's right.
And our rent to them will be less. But, so that would require reformation of the, of the comprehensive agreement?
No, that'll be part of the master facilities lease, once the construction's completed on the various phases.
Okay. So, so right now we're heading towards a site plan approval through DRC, and that will, and during that analysis, as Mr. Cooper has indicated, that will help us find out what the exact trip, the additional trip count we will need in order to accommodate the, this function.
Right. Right now it's estimated 82.
82?
Yes.
With all the new, with all the new components, the aquarium and all that?
Well, no, that, the aquarium was not part of that discussion at the time.
Right.
So I don't know.
I think the aquarium's a great idea. I love, especially the, the virtual reality part of it, you know? But the point is that I don't know how many trips it, you know, aquarium generates, especially since we're going to have a, we're going to have a water taxi component to this site. You know, a lot of people might park at the, at the Los Olas parking garage or downtown and take a water taxi here. So that, you know, maybe that's part of the analysis, but.
That's, that's all part of the DRC process.
Right. Okay. All right.
Actually, Mayor, could I, could I jump on that?
Yeah, yeah.
Because I, I have read through the entire comprehensive agreement and I've marked it up substantially, and this is one of the items that I had in there. So my, my circle, for example, around this particular item, it says, "In the event that there's not 82 trips available, HOFP will work with the city to determine the scope." And so, Ed, I need you to help me understand. So work with the city is rather vague and ambiguous language, okay? That, to me, that doesn't have a controlling word in there. Work with the city doesn't say, "We get to approve." So those are two different things. So tell me in your mind what work with the city, because that's, that sounds like we're just going to kind of do a dance together versus I get to control the outcome.
Yeah, but we do get to approve the size and the scope of the project on each phase. So if we determine, you know, if they come in phase one and they don't have enough trips, then we're going to have to negotiate the deal, and it's in there, geez, I can't tell you exactly where, but it's, we get to approve the, the facility that's being constructed so that if it's not, if we can't get there, we reduce the amount of the city's responsibility and we also reduce the amount of income that's coming. But we'll take the, the easier ones out first, the ones that aren't going to generate as much money.
But I still want to know where it says, "We get to do that," as opposed to, "We will work with you." I, I've been down this path before where we will work together, and we will work together being I have no say in the outcome.
In section 3.01.
Okay.
It says, "During the term of the comprehensive agreement, HOFP shall submit the design of each particular phase of the qualified project, together with the development budget for that phase, including temporary site for the relocation of ISHAF, to the city manager for their, or their designated for review. City has a period of 45 days from HOFP's delivery of the design and development budget to review and comment on the, on the project design."
Right. Okay, so the city manager, which is by the way not the city commission, city manager can review and comment. So he says, "I don't like it." He reviews it, "I don't like it." So I read through this. If we don't provide our response within 45 days, it's deemed to be approved. It doesn't say anything about what happens if he doesn't approve it.
Once the project, once the project design and design documents have been approved pursuant to this section 3.01, the design and design documents for such a particular phase shall be referred to as the approved plans.
So it doesn't say anything in here about what if he doesn't approve it?
If he doesn't approve it, then you're going to default under the agreement.
So we're in default. So then the city is in default.
Maybe.
Okay, so then that goes to the section.
Wait, wait, wait. Do you mean default or do you mean we waive our right to?
Well, you waive your right.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think he meant default, John. I think he meant we waive our rights.
That's why I want clarification, Mayor.
Yeah, I mean, that, when you don't respond within a certain number of days, you waive your right.
No, no, if we don't respond, it's automatically approved.
That's right. That's what I'm saying.
If we do respond and we disagree.
If we do respond, we're going to negotiate it.
Right. If we do respond, so, so they propose something. Let, let's say they're going to take out the restaurant, and we don't like taking out the restaurant. So he reviews the plan with the submittal that says we're taking out the restaurant. He disagrees. There's nothing in here then that has a provision for what happens when the city manager disagrees. If it's in there, tell me, because I haven't found it and I've read through it several times.
Commissioner, you know, you know that part of all of these agreements is, is to work in good faith with one another? And, you know, that's exactly what we're talking about here. And, you know.
Ed, I'm in the risk management business. I'm in the one, I'm, I'm in the, we're going to get divorced, not we're going to live together happily ever after business?
Well, I, I think that there are sufficient safeguards in here to protect the city in the event that something like that happens. That's what we try, that's what we tried to put in there.
You're going to have to show me where they are because I haven't found them.
Well, I still think that that's, that that provides sufficient safety for the city. That's my opinion.
Thank you.
So, so Mayor, this, this brings me on to what I think is a larger issue.
Can I, can I?
No, if, if I may, just before. So I've, I've gone through here, and as I've explained to the team, I've marked this up extensively. I, I don't, I hope everybody else has done the same. I have a lot of questions. So we can address those tonight. Your pleasure.
Yeah, I just wanted, I just wanted the, the public comment to be concluded. And, yes, go ahead.
So, my name's Jennifer Bales Drake. I'm counsel for the developer and was responsible for part of the negotiation of the comprehensive agreement. What you have to understand is, is the way the comprehensive agreement is set up, it's in phases. The construction's going to be in phases. So you have your first phase, they, the developer provides the city with the building plans, the cost, what's going on. The city has, has the opportunity and has to approve that. Once that gets approved, phase one goes forward. Then they start phase two. The city has a right. They, the developer comes in, they produce, they give the same thing, the building plans, the, the cost and, and all of that. If the city approves phase two, then we go forward, we have more money, and we build it. If the city says no, the project stays as phase one. It's built in that way. So let's take the example of the trips. If the trips weren't enough after phase one, then we couldn't build phase three, two or three. And it's built that way because of some of the uncertainties, but it's, it's also benefiting not only the city, but the developer. So the developer and the city, we designed a comprehensive agreement that all of the construction, all the plans, is going to be approved by the city before we go forward because of the way we had, we weren't certain about trips and we weren't certain about, I mean, just exactly how, you know, like, the difference with this P3 is that we're doing it in phase. Usually with a P3, you've got the whole project all at one time. What we're saying here is, is because of some of these issues that you're talking about, we decided that the phasing was the smartest way to go for all parties.
Thank you. Okay. Ms. Toothaker, are there any, any other persons with regard to your development team that want to respond to any comments?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to address really quickly the trips. So the only, again, this is not a site plan, was presented to you this evening's comprehensive agreement. I think that's very clear. Some of the comments we heard are about the site plan. Again, we look forward to engaging with the community again, which we have already done, and we've offered meetings, and we will continue to offer meetings, and we look forward to having those discussions. Even with the addition of the aquarium, which I know the team is very excited about, that's, we do trips analyses all the time. We already have a traffic consultant on board. That's, that's what we call internal capture. If somebody's coming to the aquarium, they're probably going to eat at the restaurant, they're probably going to come on the water taxi, maybe they're going to go to the swimming hall of fame. Those are people that are already, they're not unique visitors.
Well, yeah, I, I think we understand that. I just, I'm just saying, if for some reason the, the trip count is triggered, you know, what's the, what's plan B, you know? And that's all we've been talking about today.
Well, I think there are, I actually, and I, I know Chris touched on this. Number one, I, I agree with Commissioner Herbst. I think the city should start the process so that there are some properties that are not developed that, that probably want to be. But beyond that, I will just tell you, I've been doing this for a long time, every time we come up against the wall on trips, suddenly more trips appear. And that happens because a project, a project that was approved doesn't get built, or a project that was a very old, you know, building gets torn down and trips get put back in the pool. There's multiple projects. I know Bahia Mar was one. I also worked on one, that there were trips allocated that ultimately when the project went through site plan amendments and they were made smaller, there were trips available that we didn't think were there before. And that has happened. I mean, we've been in this scared about trips. We've been talking about this for 10 years. So I'm, I'm very comfortable with this project. I'm very comfortable with all the other projects coming forward, and there's some really good ones that, that I believe there will be trips available, and we look forward to working with the city on this. We would ask for your support this evening. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Mr. Spence, do we have to move to close public hearing on this?
We do.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Actually, no, Mayor, because I want to go back to the last issue that was made about the phasing, so I may.
We could, but I just want to close public hearing.
Okay, well, that was a public comment. That's why I thought it'd be appropriate.
Well, she's the, she's the developer. You can always, you can always ask that question.
All right. Motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, so do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion had been made and seconded to close public hearing.
Mr. Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Mr. Sturman?
Yes.
Mr. Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentos?
Yes, okay. Public hearing is now closed. Commissioner Herbst?
Thank you. So to address that, because I did read that, in section 3.08, under city obligations, that is J, cancellation after master lease, facilities lease execution, and it talks in there about the phasing, and I have this underlined, lease termination payment as stated in the master lease, master facilities lease. So it's not that we can just cancel it and walk away. We're going to owe you money if we cancel and walk away. So let's, let's be clear about this, that if we cancel at any point down and down the road, there's payments due to you. So this is not just a, we walk away and shake hands and say, "Thanks for the, you know, the good time."
So is it correct? Can I just address one last thing on the phasing?
Sure.
Is that okay?
Absolutely.
I just, there was a lot of talk about that, and I just, I wanted to kind of, I think when we address it here, it might address a lot of the concerns from the public and the, and the city staff and, and commission at large. So the whole phasing concept was, we recognize this is a very large project, we could not bite off all at one time and solve all of these issues that we're talking about. So concerns about how big is it? How many trips are there? What's the revenue versus the, the cost? We did this in a way that says, okay, we intend to go close this in four buckets. Now, whether we get it down to three or not, this was the initial plan. The first bucket is going to be strictly for the things that we know have to happen on the peninsula, the seawall, the heavy infrastructure, the ocean rescue, the things that we know everyone can get behind. In, in doing that, it will give us the runway we need to go finish solving the rest of the things. So the second bucket would be for the West Museum Building, now including the aquarium, we believe. And then we would do the East Building for the commercial office and the other pieces. And the fourth phase would be for the remaining site work, area development, and all the tenant improvements. So the city has a number of exit ramps, and we would not be expending funds that we would have to go chase from you if you weren't happy the whole way, right? The whole point is, we're going to walk through this process together, let you have transparency into it. We haven't necessarily addressed all of the business issues with the public because they're not all exactly solved yet. We have pro formas in place, we have budgets, but we've been working on this for three years, and one of the requirements we had was to go get 50% pre-leasing. We have those folks with us here. We have investors that are on this project for three years. And if we cannot get this comprehensive agreement approved, we can't take the next steps to start solving it together. So we built it this way so that everyone can have transparency the whole way through, and you have any number of exit ramps. But yes, if we make a determination together to go borrow the, the money or, you know, invest the money for phase one, there will be, you know, penalty costs for that. So it just, it sounds big and scary, like we're trying to jam a $200 million project down everyone's throat today. We're not. This is the framework of the business deal that's been negotiated, that solves all the issues for all the parties, and we get to continue to walk down the road together until everyone is happy.
There, there's a challenge with that, and I, I shared this with you before, so I'm not saying anything to anybody that I have not shared with the team here before. So it has been my experience that once we approve a comprehensive agreement, we're locked in. So I just want to make sure that if we do approve something tonight, that, I want to make sure that we have an opportunity, because I have a lot of issues and I, and I, as I shared with you, I don't want to go, if I go through this line by line and word by word, we're going to be here well past midnight, Mayor, because I've marked up every single page. Because we've only had a couple of days to review the final comprehensive agreement, and I have a lot of questions about it. And I, I don't want to take up everybody's time all night long. So if we do agree to move this forward, I want to make sure that we do that with an understanding that there are some things that I need clarification on, and I need to know that, that we can approve this, you know, contingent upon us bringing this back for ratification, just like we did with the lease with Kaplan, where we approved a contingent on, you know, final review and then a further ratification. So I just want to be clear, I don't want to hold up everybody and, again, keep you here all night, because, you know, I, I could do that, and I'd rather not, because I don't think that's productive for everybody. I think there's an opportunity for us to sit down and kind of go do that word by word, line by line markup with you, and I'm happy to do it. But, you know, I'm, I'm okay moving it forward, understanding that, you know, final ratification But, you know, I'm, I'm okay moving it forward, understanding that, you know, final ratification at the city's, at the city's discretion is, is gonna be a condition that I'm gonna put on it, if, if you want me to support this. Because I'm happy, again, I don't want to hold it up, but I need resolution on what I consider to be, some of these are just minor technicalities, but some of these are major sticking points for me. So I just want you to understand, again, I promise you transparency.
So, so I just want to answer your question on the legal basis. So, the reason, when I said, the difference with this P3, where normally, when you come with a P3, it's X number of dollars, and that's what you're locked into, that's not the way this is working. That's why we said, there is an amount, so let's say we build Phase One and Two, and Three becomes a problem for trips or whatever reason, city and developer agree that they're gonna downsize the project, so that money that was gonna be spent on Phase Three is not the city's obligation. What the city's obligation is, is what's currently built at the time. So instead of having a big lump sum that you're gonna be obligated, whether we're able to build it or not, you've got, you've got the obligation for what's being built.
So I'll, I'll read to you directly from it, the amount actually invested as to such phase, that's not being built, or phases pursuant to each phase's development budget, or the lease termination payment as stated in the master lease facility, lease termination payment, by the way, not being defined in the comprehensive agreement, referring us to another agreement. Because I went looking for it in the definitions, and I, unless I missed it, might happen, it's not in there. So you gotta refer yourself to another document, which...
That, we'll know that at the master facilities lease level.
Right, so I don't know what my lease termination payment that I'm agreeing to in a comprehensive agreement, because it's in another document.
Let me explain something to you.
Please.
The first, the first phase that's being built, for which money's being borrowed, has been approved by the city. Okay, so we go forward, they know what money is being spent, they know what obligations they're gonna have. Then, we come up with Phase Two, they know what they're gonna spend, city will have approved it. If the city hasn't approved it, it doesn't go forward. You have a project with Phase One. So, the way we designed this, and we did many, 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 many meetings with Susan and Ed and the city, the developers, for this reason, we started out with a lump sum, we, we decided this phasing because of the unknowns that Cory spoke about, this was the smartest way for the city and for us to go. So when it says the city's responsible, they're not responsible for the finished product that they're not getting, they're responsible for what's there. And nothing's been, nothing is built, no, no phase goes forward without the city having approved it.
So, if, if I remember correctly from the original agreement, we're committed to $2.7 million just in planning, soft costs, okay? So if you're doing Phase Three, and you've spent another $5 million on planning, engineering, soft costs and permitting, I'm responsible for that, too.
The budget set forth as part of what the city approves.
Understandable.
Commissioner, if I may, the reason that was written in there was not for, I, I think maybe there's some, some misconstruing of the, of the scenarios it was intended for, so if we need to clean that up, totally understand that. We go do Phase One, we do the site work, we do the seawall, everybody agrees we need ocean rescue, it's fine. We then agree to what Phase Two should be, the West Building with the museum, the aquarium, we get the, we get the parking right size, we, we're all comfortable with the trips, you agree to everything, you sign the master facility lease to borrow the money, let's say a new commission comes in, they don't like this building, they wish that it wouldn't have been approved by the previous commission, and they say...
And that happens, by the way.
It does. And they say, you know what, we want to kill this deal, we're gonna kill this deal. Well, we've now borrowed the money, we have investors who are expecting repayment of that, you're not gonna have to repay all of the interest that would have been, you know, a part of the financial deal over time, but there's a penalty for that prepayment because somebody killed the deal that we put in place. And that's why that was put in there.
I got one word for you, by the way, it's called Palazzo. Anybody in the audience been to a here 20 years ago and remember that deal?
I don't know what that is.
Mayor?
But, but that, that's why that provision was put in there, we would...
But Palazzo had never started, so...
Yeah, that, we would never go borrow money in order to start a project that you're not happy with. That's in there for the protection of the investors, that if you change the deal after we've all agreed, that they have some prepayment coming back to them. That's all that's, that's all that was there for it.
And, and maybe it's just a matter of, and, and that's why I said, some of these things are more concerning than others, some of these things, I think, might just be a matter of wordsmithing, that's all.
Okay, thank you. The district commissioner.
Thank you, Mayor, appreciate it. You know, this has been a long time coming, I just want to go back, actually, more than 10 years ago, when we sat through so many meetings, watching the city commission trying to figure out what we're gonna do with this peninsula. I'm happy that we actually made the progress, and we have the pools, we have the dive tower. This, to me, is, is the final phase of, of this peninsula. I've, I've listened to all of the comments tonight, I've listened to all of the concerns, all of the questions. I see that staff actually in the, in the CAM, under recommendation, says, staff recommends the city commission adopt a resolution approving a comprehensive agreement, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Staff could have said, you know, bringing this forward as a discussion, sometimes we see in the CAM, it's just offered to us as a discussion. But when it, when staff recommends that we adopt something, approving something, there's a reason for that. And I, and I'll tell you, I looked over my list of meetings from the last, actually, almost three years, more than three years, because this, actually, the last commission approved the interim agreement two years and eight months ago. So for the last two years and eight months, all of this has been developing. When we do our disclosures, you'll see that my last meeting was on August 29th, just a couple of weeks ago, where because of all of the questions that I had, and I'm not gonna go through all of those tonight, because the reason that I asked for this meeting on August 29th, with everyone that we've heard speak tonight, including our staff, was because I needed to get that comfort level with the city's liability, with the city's exposure in terms of the dollars. Now, some of the things that have been offered from some of the testimony tonight's a little bit off, because we did find out tonight that the aquarium will offset that, I think, 3.6 million most exposure to about 2.5 million. But I'm gonna tell you something, I've been speaking consistently to so many people in the city, that, number one, have been thrilled with the development of this peninsula to date, and they're just waiting for this. It was said earlier that we don't have this kind of space on the Barrier Island, we don't have this kind of meeting space, or event space, or shared workspace, and that's true. I, I am very confident that this facility will meet all of the requirements that we needed to meet for us not to have a tremendous exposure financially. I, I feel that, once this moves forward, it's not gonna be an issue. I, I feel that, you know, every time we see projects come to us in the last five years, there's always risk, there's always some risk. It's our job to figure out that risk, and to figure out if it's worth moving forward with a project. We have, PFM looked at everything, and I know that their biggest concern was the dive component, but, I, so I spoke to people in the cruise industry, I spoke to people that have on their ships out of Port Everglades dive shows, they will love to come to this facility and have all of their performers rehearse and use this facility. So I'm not as concerned as PFM was about that dive component, so I don't think that that's gonna be as big a risk as perhaps is stated in their report to us. But I will tell you, that there is, there is an excitement in the community about what can happen on this peninsula with these buildings. And I, I feel confident in the answers that I received when I met with staff on August 29th, including Susan Grant, and I met with the development team and council, I, I just feel confident that we are ready to move forward with this. I, I know that staff has spent months and months and months and months on this, so, you know, and I believe that some of them have even more expertise than any of us on this commission. Our legal team has reviewed, everyone has reviewed the financial viability of this project. And I do believe that going forward, once we do enter into the DRC process, we'll be able to flesh out those other concerns, those concerns even about trips, those concerns about ingress and egress, any parking concerns. I believe that that's when we will flesh all of that out and make sure that this project is going to be viable and work. Just a couple of comments, I appreciate Mr. Brown speaking on behalf of the neighborhood in which this project is located. He is correct, I did attend many of those meetings, if not all of those meetings, to listen to the comments from the neighborhood. I will take exception with a comment that sort of led people to believe that I don't answer emails from my office. I take a lot of pride in the fact that my office answers emails. We religiously go through emails, there are three of us in our office, we do that. I have a feeling I know what the speaker was alluding to, and that's probably because the person that was writing wrote so many times and just never really liked the answers that he received, so then probably just said, well, I'm not getting the answers, and he's not answering my questions, or whatever. But I want to just clear that up, because, again, I take a lot of pride in how we respond to our constituents, or actually, anyone in the city, or anywhere else. We answer our calls, we answer our texts, and we answer our emails. I do want to ask Ms. Toothacre a question, because this came up at my pre-agenda meeting last night, there was concern from Idlewild expressed, and we heard a little bit of that tonight, that they were not in on discussions. I did hear Mr. Brown contradict some of that, but I want to make sure that anyone that might even be not just in the neighborhood in which this project resides, but across the water as well, what efforts were made to engage in conversation, to engage in discussions about the comprehensive agreement, or even the site plan, even though we're not discussing that right now, but what kind of efforts were made?
Thank you, Commissioner. I personally reached out to Idlewild, both on the phone and twice in writing, offering a presentation. It was my understanding, and I, I can confirm that they were, that members of Idlewild participated in the presentation that we had, which was a Zoom meeting with the Venetian, but there were, there was, I did make a follow-up attempt after that, and I said multiple times, it's not the site plan, I know that they, they had concerns about their views being blocked, and that seemed to be the gist of what they wanted to talk about, but we did offer to make presentations to Idlewild.
And what was the response?
I did not get a response.
So you did not get a response? Okay, so, you know, I, I, again, it's so important, and I, and I really hope that once this moves forward, that we will have ample opportunity, because then we go through a, a whole different phase, a site plan phase. We'll go to DRC, we'll go to planning and zoning, we'll come back to the city commission with a site plan, and that will engage every, every resident, not just in District Two, but also throughout the city if they so choose, correct?
Commissioner, we will make a point of going to Idlewild if they will have us, and make a presentation to Idlewild as a separate presentation from the Central Beach Alliance, which we will go back to on multiple occasions, I'm sure, the Venetian, any of our neighbors that would like us to come, we would commit to that tonight, would be very pleased to do that.
Excellent, because again, I just, I don't want anyone to ever feel that they're not given an opportunity to participate, or to voice, you know, their concerns, or issues, or anything.
We agree.
So I, I appreciate that going forward.
We agree, thank you.
Mayor, I, I, I am supportive of, of moving forward with this. I believe that staff has taken, you know, tell me, Greg, how many months, because I, I thought, actually, this might even be coming months ago to the city commission, but I, I think the city staff, including legal, including financial, I mean, almost anyone that you can imagine that could touch all of the pages that went into the comprehensive agreement, city staff has spent how much time on this?
So city staff did spend an abundant amount of time to minimize or mitigate as much risk as possible. You saw the cap, you saw the threshold of $3.5 million.
Which now is reduced by 1.1 with the aquarium.
Right, that is, that's what was commented, but I, I was reminded by Commissioner Herbst of our neutrality in this topic, right? We have to maintain a neutral stance on this, so when, when we say we recommend, we recommend for your consideration, it is the commission that has to evaluate the value that the new amenities would bring, like the aquarium, like the value of the new fire rescue headquarters, or the value of the bleachers, or, or just this being as an amenity to, to, to the Barrier Island. And also, you know, it is the responsibility of the commission to, to weigh those options and figure out if the risks are worth it, you know? So certainly, I, I just want to preserve the neutrality of, of staff on, on this item. But certainly, this does bring all those additional components that are not there today, that the city would have to expend and project, and, and, as, as we've seen, you know, in the recent projects, they, they can take some time.
No, thank you. And, you know, lastly, what I would just say, Mayor, is that, you know, we saw a little bit of glimpse of, of what is entailed on this project, and, and what this comprehensive agreement talks about. But I will tell you that, one of the things that I'm actually most excited about is just the entire partnership with Every Child a Swimmer. This peninsula, if we move forward with this project, this peninsula is actually going to take the city to a different level when it comes to our commitment to the world of aquatics. And I, and I have gone through every single page, I've been, I've been living this project even before I was elected. I used to watch your commission, Mayor, when you were the district commissioner, and all of the iterations that we saw, and all of the, all of the starts, and then all of the stops, and that went on for over 10 years, 10 years. And I think right now, we are at the point where we just have to say, you know what, it's time to move forward with this project, it's time to trust that our staff and their expertise have done the due diligence, have gone through this with even more than a fine-tooth comb than I have, or any of us, in terms of reading the comprehensive agreement. But I feel confident that it is time to move forward with it, and I, I, I will support moving forward and adopting this resolution, approving the comprehensive agreement. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor, do you have any additional comments you'd like to make?
A lot has been said, and at this point, I just want to say I support moving forward.
Sorry?
I support moving forward with the comprehensive agreement.
Okay. Commissioner Sternman?
Oh, jeez. Couple of things, just so, so we understand where we are right here, there's been some discussion, 2020, 2021, I think, October 2021, again, it was brought up, and I think the, the last interim agreement was December 2021, is that correct? Because, I mean, I, when we, we had spoken back and forth...
I can, I can, timeline again, real quick.
So we're like, so we're, we're, the last thing that was presented was an interim agreement, and there's been, this is the first comprehensive agreement, but there was an interim agreement signed 2021, December, is that correct?
That's correct. I thought it was, it's not October?
That's correct, yeah. It came in front of commission in October, it was signed in December of '21.
Okay, thanks.
So we've been working on an interim agreement with everything you've seen here since December of '21.
Okay, and this is, and this is the next phase going forward. There's a couple of questions I have, a couple is, is maybe not the right word. It says a few things that, that there's a potential 3.4 basically million dollar, uh, loss to the city, an upscale of a little over 150, but a potential loss of three and a half, 3.36 million dollar loss to the city, is that correct?
So, it, that is based on the worst-case sensitivity analysis performed by PFM, and when, when you say loss, let's not forget, there are public components in there that the city is obligated to pay for. Where is that exact demarcation? You know, we could go through and, and figure that out, but it's an investment towards the public amenities, as well as what the exposure could be, if it was a worst-case scenario, based on PFM's assumptions. And, you know, one of the things we didn't talk about tonight, we have our potential tenants, the tenants that we have on letter of intent here with us tonight, and they all believe we are going to far exceed the revenue shares that have been presented. Now, we're not gonna present that, because we want to make sure that you're making your decision based on something that's conservative, but the ideas that are flowing from what Commissioner Glassman has said, you know, the dive shows and the entertainment piece could be the largest piece of this whole revenue share, and, and they firmly believe that we will well outperform the, the assumptions that have been made by PFM. So those, those were done in order to give you kind of the bookends of where this could be.
Now, the other thing is, the annual commitment for the city is $11 million.
That is the master facility lease payment.
Okay. Explain the difference between our, our annual loss and the commitment, I mean, I, that's...
So it's basically, the master facility lease, and again, this is based on the initial budgets we have of $190 million fully developed cost. Susan had asked, hey, let's go put a cap on this thing, so that, at the, it's gonna vary by interest rate, but at that time, it was approximately nine, nine and a half million dollars. So we said, let's go set a cap that we know we will not exceed, so again, working through those four buckets, so that we can make you happy at every step of the way. So that's the master facility lease payment at nine and a half to 11 million dollars, and then, if you think about the waterfall, we have the chance to bring in all the way up to nine and a half million dollars, essentially net zero, or it would be a worst-case scenario, if none of the dive shows happened, we weren't able to lease all of the spaces, and you'd have a $3 million loss, meaning you only brought in 6.5 million of the 9.5 million you needed to make the payment. Okay?
I'd like to add to that, on the income streams, we spend a lot of times validating and selecting the tenants. Our projection for the overall income stream is almost 11.8 million, and to be conservative, Susan and our team, and the rest of the team in the city, recognized that she wanted to cap it at 9.6, believing that that's the amount that would be most likely. But our projections remain at 11.8 million, and the riskiest part, according to the sensitivity analysis, we have people that flew in from Las Vegas and all that, this is Las Vegas quality shows that are coming here.
Chirp to Salay.
Yes, they, they're, they're ex Chirp to Salay people, they know they can surpass these numbers, they just want to be given the opportunity to do it, and you know what? We don't even have to wait for all the buildings to be built, so we hope that after tonight, one thing we're gonna work to help the city make some money, and make ISHAF make some money, is to allow them to start their, their water shows and their pool shows. You have 1,500 bleachers in the pools that after 7 o'clock at night are closed, nobody uses them. So we just want to use them when you're not using them, on Wednesday night, Thursday night, Friday night, and two shows on Saturday, two on Sunday, when you're not using it. We're generating new money with a bunch of experts sitting all right back in that row here, that, if you take the time to talk to them, you will be dazzled by their ability and the quality of shows that they are presently in in Las Vegas.
If I take the time, you bring up a good point, if I take the time to speak to them, you, I guess this has been since, we were operating since December of '21. Here with me. Three days, three days, I don't know how John Herbst, Commissioner Herbst went through this in three days, but we're now going to change from interim to a comp agreement, you've had two and a half years, we given three, maybe four days to go through this, I mean, this is locking in for a comp agreement, I'm going to ask my colleagues, I think, seriously, guys, we need to defer this, maybe have a workshop, give a little time to look at this, this is clearly, I mean, I don't see how we could possibly be voting on this today, I mean, we need a little bit more time, this is really not fair to us to go, and that's, I mean, I hope, I don't want to have to vote against it, I think we should, we should do a, we should defer this, give us a time to do it, maybe a workshop, a conference, get a chance to digest this and then come back to it, I really do not think it's fair.
Okay, does that complete your comments?
Yeah, I mean, yes.
Okay, so, let me just wrap this up, you know, clearly, there's a lot of material you presented tonight that were attached as exhibits, but I see the comprehensive agreement as a framework to move forward and further discussion, it's not the final analysis of where we are on this project, we need to start somewhere, and the comprehensive agreement is a starting point, and I think that, you know, it's all night, I mean, I love pretty pictures, it isn't always what's, what we really need to understand here tonight, it's not just about the glamour of it, it's also about the business aspect of it, and I'm very concerned about this, the city's exposure to this, and I've had a number of conversations with council as well as the, as well as you gentlemen, in terms of trying to understand, you know, how the city is partnering with you in terms of trying to make this a reality. I applaud your efforts in moving forward on this with all this time that you've spent on this the last couple of years, I think it's a tremendous investment that you've made, both financially as well as your, you know, sweat equity in trying to see this accomplished, but like I said, I see the comprehensive agreement as a, as a starting point, and we will continue these discussions, so...
Mayor, could I just comment on that, though?
Yeah.
So, that was where I was trying to get to, to begin with, I don't want to not approve the project tonight, but I do want us to have an opportunity, again, like I said, I have, and I'm not going over them right now, but I've got, there's 46 pages here, and I got 46 pages of comments, so rather than go through all that, what I'd like to suggest, and I'm actually going to make a resolution, that we approve this subject to continued discussion, and we bring this back for ratification, again, like we did with Kaplan, so I suggest we approve it, but I want to have a conversation with them and have an opportunity to address some of the things that I'm concerned about in here, and we can bring it back to the commission then for a final ratification, so that would be my, that would be, that would be my resolution.
Mr. Mayor, as the applicant, can we, can I make a comment?
Yeah, please, go ahead.
We'd ask for just a vote up or down on the resolution tonight, as you mentioned, you've had conversations with staff, we've had years of conversations with your professional staff, you've brought in outside consultants that have fiduciary duties, you have people like Ed Dionne who has decades of legal knowledge in this county, you have financial advisors with fiduciary duty to the city that we've been negotiating with, and that you've had opportunities to talk to them all this time, so we would ask tonight that we can move forward, that you just do an up or down vote on the resolution to pass this agreement, and we move forward, you have many more bites at the apple between DRC site plan and the many other agreements that are coming before you, we'd ask that we take this step tonight, and so we can move forward.
Yeah, I agree with you.
Senator, I appreciate those comments, but talking about our financial advisors, PFM, they've indicated that we're at risk for potentially $3 million a year, so that's concerning, and one of the things I will point out, that yes, we do have more opportunities for discussions on site plans and things like that, but if I walk you through all of my concerns in here, they're not about the site plan, when we approve the comprehensive agreement, it locks us into these terms and conditions, I know this because I've dealt with it on other projects that I'm similarly distressed about, so my concern is, we approve all the terms and conditions in the comprehensive agreement, and we are handcuffed to that, there are certain things with respect to the site plan, I agree with you, that will come back, but not all these other provisions that are in this 46-page document, so I want to have an opportunity to sit down in good faith and talk about these things and bring it back, again, we just did this, there's a, there's a format for what we've done, where we said, you know, the attorney's office would sit down with the applicant, and we would bring back a final agreement for approval, which we just did the other night, so I would say there's an opportunity to move this forward, approve it tonight, subject to working out these, these issues that I'm concerned about, I don't want to stop it, I want to move it forward, but I'm not comfortable with it the way it is right now, and I think we deserve, the city deserves, an opportunity to address some of these issues, and I can tell you, because I've been working on this for four years as well when I was a city auditor, and I can tell you, I objected to the deal when I was a city auditor, and I've got 40 years of financial experience doing this, I started out in Wall Street when I was 25, I'm 60, so I've been doing this a long time, too, so I had objections to this, I've raised these objections for years, and now that I actually get a vote, I want to have that opportunity to try and address some of the issues, because I agree with what my, what my fellow commissioners have said, I think this project can be very successful, you know, when I got my first presentation on the Aquatic Center in 2006, it had an aquarium in it, I was at that, I sat there, I watched that, okay, I was new to the commission as a city auditor at the time, and that was part of the original conception of the redevelopment in 2006, so I fully support where we're going with this, but that doesn't mean I fully support the comprehensive agreement, I like the concept, I like where we're going with it, I think it can be improved, and that's all I want to do, is improve this deal so that I make sure that I protect the city, that's all I'm asking for here, and that's why, and that's my resolution.
If you've, okay, if you've waited two years, and we have four frickin' days, seriously, why can't you wait, why can't you delay it, if you want an up and down, if you really want an up and down vote, a chance for us to look at it in more detail, I mean, three and a half million, okay, unlikely, but we're taking the risk, you know, for three and a half million dollars, I could do sidewalks, we could pay police better, there's, no, it's unlikely, but it's on us, and I think, no, four days, guys, why do you want it, you need it today?
Commissioner, with all due respect, we acted in good faith, working with your attorney, your fiscal advisors, your professional financial gurus, everybody that you have put at the table with us, we have worked in good faith with them, we have worked well with them, and we have come to the conclusion together that this is the best possible format to move it forward, now you want to say that we're going to undo all this work, and we're going to go clarify, what does clarify mean? We are fair people, we will clarify as we go through the next steps that we need, and we are here to build the project that you want, so we will build Phase One, which is strictly government stuff, seawall, the ocean rescue, and stuff like that, so you want to stop there, we'll stop there and I'll go home, you want to continue and build a museum, then you'll deal with the museum, we'll put the museum and the aquarium, we're putting them together, that's part of the deal, so Phase One is easy, let's get Phase One, while we do Phase One, Commissioner Herbst, we can clarify anything you want, we are fair people, ask your staff, ask all the people that work with us, all the meetings we've had together, when was I a contradictory person, I'm always a team player, and I'm always willing to work, but we are at the end of the rope, folks, four years, put yourself in our shoes, $3 million of cash, I have to answer all these people that came in support, Enzo Phelps, his bosses, his bosses' bosses, everybody's had enough of listening to us saying, it's enough, yeah, but they want another thing, and they want another, we have done everything you have asked, help us, allow us just to move to the next step, and we'll make it as big or as small as you want.
So, again, I've proffered what I think is a compromise for where Commissioner Sternman is to where I think Commissioner Glassman is, so Commissioner Glassman, Commissioner Beasley-Pitman want to approve this right now, up or down vote, Commissioner Sternman would like to wait on this, I'm trying to offer a compromise in the middle that says we approve it tonight, and we have an opportunity to come back and revisit these things.
Well, you're asking us to reprove it and then give us the opportunity to make changes.
Exactly, to...
So we're not really approving it tonight?
We are approving it contingent upon a, the discussion that he's talking about...
Our staff has done that already, our staff has done that already.
All right, you know what, then fine, I'm going to go through this page by page, buckle up, everybody, it's going to be a long night.
Well, before you do that...
Mayor, it's nine.
That's where we are, that's where I'm going. Well, you just relax, okay?
Close it off.
I don't like being told that. Would you mind, I'm trying to conduct this meeting, it's almost 10 o'clock, I need a motion to extend the meeting, since you decided you're going to prolong the meeting, so let us now do what we have to do in order to go past 10 o'clock, okay?
Motion to extend.
So there's a motion to extend the time past 10 o'clock?
Second.
It's been a second.
Okay, what time?
Please, to...
Midnight.
To midnight?
Second.
Okay, please call the roll, I don't know if I agree with that, but please call the roll.
Commissioner Glassman?
No.
Vice Mayor Beasley-Pitman?
No.
Commissioner Sternman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalas?
No.
Okay, guess we're done.
So, so would someone like to make a motion to extend time past 10 o'clock, this not to midnight? Make a motion, make a motion to extend time to 11:45. Is there a second?
Second.
Let's try this again, come on.
Well, wait a minute, we're going to have a problem here, because Commissioner Beasley-Pitman had to step out for a second.
Wait till she comes back.
Wait till she comes back.
That's all, yeah, I, and while she's out there, I'm going to just say that I, I just seem to have a lot more faith in our staff than some of my colleagues have, because, you know, every month for about a year, I've been asking, where is this comprehensive agreement, staff has been telling me, including Susan Grant from the manager's office, financial people, PFM, everyone's been saying, we still need time, we need to vet, we need to do our due diligence, we need to make sure that we're living up to our fiduciary responsibility, we have to make sure that the city is not exposing itself to a liability that we cannot handle, again, I'm still hearing that three and a half million, but the aquarium, again, has taken it down to two point, but I'm not concerned with that, because I'm going to tell you, this is going to be a successful project, people are waiting for this project. And, and you know, I didn't want to make this contentious, but I'm finding there's just some obstruction, there's behavior going on here, and I'm going to also say to our Commissioner Herbst, you know, we went through an interim agreement, why do I not remember when you were city auditor that you were objecting to anything, I don't remember you voicing opinions, objecting to things, I don't remember any of that.
Well, I'm sorry, your memory is faulty.
Okay, I like to see the minutes, city clerk, I want to see the minutes of when we approved the interim agreement, and I want to see the objections that the then-city auditor raised about this project, I want to see that, if you can get that to me from October 2021.
So what you'll remember is, the way I, the way I practice as city auditor is to express all my concerns to you individually in private, I don't air it in a public way like this, so every time I've had an objection to something, I've always shared my opinion with the commissioners when we had our one-on-ones, and I'm sorry that you don't recall that, but that's okay, I understand.
You know what, I don't recall it because it never happened, and now it's easy...
Commissioner, don't tell me what I told you and what happened to...
No, I am telling you, you know, I'm tired of listening to your resume, I'm tired of all of your, all of your stuff.
Wait, 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 Mr. Mayor, isn't there a motion on the floor?
There's a motion in the second on the floor. You know what, I also want to, I also want to, no, I'm going to say this, because when, when items come up in District One, all I hear from the District One Commissioner is, stay in your lane, stay out of my district, well, guess what, this is my district, and I'm saying, I'm ready to move forward with this project, I agree with Senator Smith, I agree with staff, I agree with all those people, I am not looking forward to delaying this for another three years, I want to make a motion that we approve...
Wait, because a motion on the floor to extend, extend the time to 10:45?
Go ahead, go ahead.
11, I think it's 11:45.
Yeah, which is ridiculous, that's ridiculous. All right, please call the roll.
Commissioner Glassman?
No.
Vice Mayor Beasley-Pitman?
I'm sorry, what is the time?
11:45.
No.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes, let's get this done.
Okay.
Commissioner Sternman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalas?
No, but, okay, so the meeting's now extended to 11:45, so Commissioner Herbst, you have the floor.
So, at this point, I believe I've already made a resolution, and I don't know if Commissioner Sternman had seconded it or not, but, there's a resolution on the floor, I introduced a resolution.
You don't need a resolution, a second for a resolution, but you said, but you said before we approved that you wanted to, you wanted to still ask more questions, would you like us to move forward with the vote on the resolution first?
Yes.
Okay.
And I still want to ask more questions regardless, so those are not mutually exclusive.
Well, which do you want to do? If you, if we, if the resolution passes, then there's no reason to ask your questions tonight, because the resolution is...
Then I'll ask my, right, then I'll ask my questions in a deliberate fashion, sitting down and going through these.
Okay, so...
So, let's vote a resolution on the floor.
I need clarification on...
There's a resolution on the floor in which Commissioner Sternman has requested that we approve...
No, I'm sorry, Mayor, no, but my, my resolution is that we approve this tonight, conditioned on addressing some of the concerns that I have with this agreement and bringing it back at the next meeting for final ratification by the commission.
So, so that, you're framing it more like a motion, so we have a resolution that's attached to the item, you usually introduce that resolution, and if there are amendments to be made to it, introduce the resolution with the amendments that you've stated.
Okay.
So, he hasn't stated any amendments tonight.
So my amendment, so I'm introducing the resolution, and my amendment is that it is subject to a negotiation on the items that I believe are concerning, and then bringing those back for final ratification, again, I'm trying to find a middle ground here, I am trying to be collaborative and work together and find a middle ground, I think we can get to where we need to be, but I do think, as Commissioner Sternman points out, you know, having two days to review eight inches of documents is unfair, but I have gone through them, and I do have concerns, and I have not had an opportunity to address these concerns with staff since, you know, Sunday to today, and I'd like to have an opportunity to sit down with the team and resolve those, I don't think I'm being unreasonable when I ask that, again, I want to move forward with the project, but allow me an opportunity to sit down and address these questions and see where we are, I think we can get there, I want to get there.
Okay, so there's a resolution on the floor, Mr. Spence, to approve the comprehensive agreement, I guess in principle, subject to modifications that can ultimately be amending the comprehensive agreement, which would later be voted on at a subsequent meeting, that's the resolution as I understand it.
It seems broad and vague to me.
Well, I'm just saying, that's the way I understand it.
I know, but it's broad and vague.
From what I'm understanding from Commissioner Herbst's comparison, comparison to prior actions of the board is more along the lines of approving the terms, or agreeing to the terms, and hoping for...
Originally with the Kaplan agreement, we had, we had approved terms, the basic terms, subject to a final lease agreement, which needed to be entered into, which is a little bit different than what we have here, we, there, if we're approving the terms tonight...
So the way, right.
We already have the agreement with us, so it's not like there's another agreement that we're looking for, the agreement itself has been promulgated by the parties, so it's not, it's not the same analogy, so the point is, though, I mean, we can vote it up or down, it's up to this commission whether...
But I do need clarity on it, so Section Two of the resolution provides for the approval of the comprehensive agreement and substantially the form attached, Commissioner is proposing that we approve it and then, subsequent to further negotiations and ratifications...
Well, I think, I think, Mr. Spence, I think, you know, if we approve the comprehensive agreement, we would have to approve it for, on its basic terms, and just like the Kaplan agreement, you know, if he wants to make that analogy, there were basic terms that the commission had agreed to, and subject to further refinement, as would be spelled out in a lease agreement, if we agree to approve the comprehensive agreement night, tonight, there cannot be any changes of comprehensive terms, just like we wouldn't have made any changes of comprehensive terms in the Kaplan lease, so if we're agreeing to the, to the, to the basic terms here, so that the fundamental, the fundamental terms are being approved tonight.
As presented in the document.
Right, so Mayor, that, that's an interesting point, and so I thank you for the clarity that you're trying to bring to this, so as, as we're talking to the team, they said, we have an opportunity to come back and talk about some of the things that are in the agreement and negotiate on them, so I want to know, do we have that ability or not? or not? May, maybe that's a question for, for... That's for Mr. Spence to answer.
No, 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 this, this was just a representation that was, that was made by the, you know, by the applicant here, and so I wanna understand if that's in fact the case, I was, I, I heard, if, if I, if I heard correctly, that we have an opportunity to discuss some of these terms and come to agreement, so is that the case or not?
Well, I'm not sure exactly what you mean by negotiate, but the way the, the deal is set up is, instead of it being one large deal, it's in phases, so we build the first phase, which is the dock, the seawall, and the infrastructure there, that's basically just so that...
That's phase one, right?
It's phase one, and if you guys say stop after phase one, we've got triggers, there's the issue.
So, all right, let me, let me, let me, maybe this would be helpful, okay, so, for example, on page 12, okay, this is Section 3.08, City Obligations E, separate parking agreement, so the city hereby agrees to work with HOPF on a separate parking agreement as the number of parking spaces to be reserved, so what's the impact of that on the city park garage, where, you know, we built a garage, we spent parking revenue, parking, you know, our, our parking fund revenue to build that, um, I'm not sure if we currently have any outstanding debt on that, that we may have pledged the revenues to, so I'd like to understand, what's the impact of making this...
So, I tell you the, the history behind that section right there?
Oh, no, I know the history behind it, I just wanna know what the impact is.
No, 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 we asked for 250 spaces in the, in the garage, and the city said no, so, they said, they said, developer, we will work with you on your parking, they would not, they would...
So what does that mean, what does that mean, work with us?
What we understood from the city telling us that they would work with us, is that they'll not give us a set number, because they don't know yet because of the issues you're talking about, but, but they said, basically, trust us, we're gonna work with you on parking, we wrote it that way, we didn't, we didn't say, no, we've gotta have X number of spaces, first draft, we asked for 250, when they said they couldn't do it, we agreed to the work with, just like the, the terms where it's talking about the phases, where we said the parties are gonna work together, so, let's say we get to phase two...
But, but hold on, hold on, so it says, available to the project and rate for same, what does that mean, does that mean you're paying for it or you're not paying for it?
Where are you available?
I'm, I'm on Section E.
Yeah, we, we planned on paying for it.
Okay, doesn't say that, it doesn't say how much you're gonna pay for it.
We reduced the paragraph from a specific of how many and what we were gonna pay to, we would work together.
Okay, so...
And made available to the project at rate for same.
At rate for same, so what does that mean?
Well, whatever the current rate is.
Uh, I can provide clarity on that, so the, so this states that will enter into a separate agreement, and those are the terms that that separate agreement will, um, uh, will spell out, the project rate for the parking.
Okay, and, and we determine that rate?
That will be negotiated with that separate parking agreement, those are terms, the terms of the rate and the number of spaces will be negotiated under that separate parking agreement.
Okay, here, here's my next issue, page 12, going down to I, cancellation prior to master facilities lease execution, prior to the execution of the master facilities lease, if the project is canceled, the city is unable to obtain, here's my concern, trustee approval, as we know...
For the declaration.
Understood, understood, um, if we don't get the trustee approval, then it says that the city shall reimburse HOPF its agents, blah, 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 the costs incurred for the work and services provided under this comprehensive agreement.
To that date, yes.
Right, but, so here's my thing, if the state turns you down, I don't know why I would be responsible for the costs.
It's the city that's requesting the approval.
Again, the reason for, for that, Commissioner, is...
No, we'll, look, we'll request the approval, I get that, but if the trustees of the state say no...
I just, I wanna, I wanna go back to, to the overall concept of the way that the deal was laid out, we set this up in a way that gave you every opportunity along every step of the way to approve where we were at in the big picture and the next bite that we were taking off, so, what's in the deed restriction, it says it shall not be for any private use, we have private use going on here to fully subsidize the public piece, so we need to get approval of that, so if it comes to a point where we've contemplated a $190 million project that has private uses to pay for that, and the state says no, well, then the whole project changes and it comes down, and if you then elect to say, well, we don't want the project, because we're not willing to just take a, a standalone museum box without something else to pay for it, then there would be an obligation if we had borrowed funds to that point, so, again, it's set up in a way that we have to make you happy every time you borrow the money, and if you're not willing to borrow more money because of some deal terms, we can amend the agreement, we're not signing this for 30 years today, this is the framework that allows us to move forward, and if we have to amend the agreement, which I think we will, I would be shocked if we got all the way to the opening of the building without having to amend the agreement in some way, we all have to agree on this together, we're not just gonna continue to try to ramrod something because this is the way it was drafted today.
Right, but that's, but that's not what this section says about this, so the one...
But that's the framework of the deal, and then the way the master facility lease works allows you, I'm sorry.
I understand all that, but G up above says, approval from trustees, as a condition precedent to the execution of the ground lease and the master facilities lease, as well as the closing of the financial plan, HOPF and the city will work together and file any and all necessary paperwork at HOPF's cost, HOFP's cost, I'm sorry, uh, to obtain a waiver of any required revenue sharing and approval from the trustees of the Internal Improvement Fund of the State of Florida for the overall development, so forth and so on, because it sits on a land lease from the State of Florida, so if the State of Florida comes in and says, no, we don't approve your revenue sharing agreement, okay, then we go down to cancellation, if the city is unable to obtain trustee approval, then it says, further, the city shall reimburse you, if, if we work with you to get the state to approve this, and through no fault of our own, the state says no, then I gotta pay you.
But, but we're gonna, they're gonna be, but they're gonna be, they're starting construction, just so you understand, the first thing that we have to do is build the seawall, okay, that is gonna benefit the city whether we build the building or not, that would be something that the city would be obligated to pay for, because those, those would, they're not gonna go tear out the seawall, because the trustees said, no, we're not gonna approve any private use, and you're gonna have to revenue share with us, so, so there will be work, we're not waiting, 'cause, I don't know if you've been dealing with the trustees lately, but it moves like molasses.
I'm, I'm aware, I'm aware.
So, we're gonna start phase one, that's the whole point, that's why it's so important to get this comprehensive agreement signed tonight, because we still have to go to DRC, and so then you have to get, because we haven't gotten any site plan approvals, 'cause we have to get this first, and so, once this comprehensive agreement's done, we're gonna start going for permitting, so that we can get moving, the trustees are gonna continue to move at their slow pace, once we get site plan approval and the permits, they're gonna start phase one construction, so if that comes about and it has to be canceled, those improvements, those that we talked about, and, and it's set forth what the phase ones are, the city would reimburse them, because they're gonna walk away, the city will have them and...
Right, I, I'd like to add to that, let's simplify this a whole lot more, let's assume we get no trips, no approvals from the trustees, nothing, you have an obligation to build a museum, and we're just gonna build a museum, and that's it, and we're gonna build a big box and it's gonna be called a museum, and if you wanna add parking, we'll add parking, you don't wanna add parking, we don't add parking, we're gonna adapt this project to whatever it is that's needed, but we have to respect the deed restrictions, right? The deed restriction says, nobody can use this, this peninsula unless ISHAF is there, and our mission is to try to figure out and answer the problem, so that the city's successful, ISHAF is successful, and we get this job done, so, regardless of what happens, you still have to build a museum, we still have to get some of this stuff work, and all we're saying is, whatever we work for you, and we're gonna pay for, at the end, if we have to leave, it's yours, you keep it, you pay for it, that's all we're saying.
Mayor, did you present this all by yourself, is all of this yours, or did you work in concert with departments in the city to craft all these pages in front of us?
Everybody, and everybody who knows me knows I'm not good with names, so I'll let my colleagues name all the names, and I think it's probably everybody in the city.
I just want to, I just want to know, and I want the public to know, that this didn't just happen, because you gave us a document and our city had no input.
Right.
How much input did the city have in this document?
A lot, I've been at this for four years, since the comp agreement, which is a contract, we've been at it constantly, every day since then.
City manager's office, finance, legal?
Legal.
Everyone.
Yes.
Everyone.
So, so continuing, continuing along, because I believe I was still...
I wanna call the question, Mayor, I wanna call the question.
Continuing along, um...
I wanna call the question, Mayor.
Section 4.02...
Since December of 21.
So, Section 4.02...
I'm calling the question, Mayor.
Cost overruns, is that to the extent that there's a cost overrun associated with construction, such cost overruns will be paid by HOFP?
That's correct.
So, just a question now, okay, um, so I know that the city is guaranteeing, so there are cost overruns, I assume you're increasing the amount of your borrowing, if you increase the amount of your borrowing to cover the cost overruns, is the city then responsible for guaranteeing the portion associated with the cost overruns? Let me simplify that as well. Sure. We have a plan that we're gonna build, that we have to have a budget that you will agree and approve, we have to build it with that number, if it costs us more, it's on us. I understand that it's on us, everything is on you, but we guarantee it at the end, so what I'm saying... You guarantee only what you have contracted for, so if you've contracted for phase one at 40 million, and Cory and I messed this up and it cost us 42, well, I pay and he pays, and, and we come up with the 2 million. So that extra amount does not become part of what we are guaranteeing? No. Okay, and again, like I said, as I said, there are things that just need clarification, that's all, and I tried to say that. Okay, now, Commissioner Glassman called the question. Wait, no, I'm sorry, Mayor, the last time I called the question, you ignored me. Hold it, hold it, hold it, Commissioner Glassman called the question, Mr. Spence, does that mean that I have to take a vote on calling the question, and, and if it succeeds, then we go to voting on the resolution that's been, that's been introduced by Commissioner Herbst? What's the procedure here? Calling the question means we take a vote on that, right?
Yes, it is, yes, it does.
Okay. So, Mayor, I will remind you, when I called the question at the last meeting, you ignored me, I called the question three times to, to stop debate by, by Commissioner Glassman, and you ignored me, so if you're going to, if you go... I don't recall that. I do, I am happy to pull it out and show it to you, if you want me to pull up the tape. Okay, well, you don't have to pull anything out, just... Pull up the tape. But just, um, why don't we, uh, take a vote on that, if it's turned down, then we'll continue with your questioning, that's all, it's as simple as that.
I object as a matter of procedure that you're favoring one person...
Oh, God. Okay, all right.
Do you check any research for that?
Okay. So, uh, there's a request to call the question, Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
This is on calling the question or voting on the resolution?
No, calling the question. Please call the roll, this is to determine whether or not we're going to terminate, uh, the discussion on this and move to the resolution, so that, we're just voting on calling the question.
No, we're not, we're voting on the resolution, if you call the question, you vote on the resolution.
No, you, you call the question, it's a two-thirds vote on the motion to call the question, and then if it succeeds, you move forward.
Just wanna ask the applicant. Wait, so we have, we have that... Do you wanna roll the dice? Excuse me, we're, please, you're out of order, uh, right now, there's, Commissioner Glassman has called the question, we have to have a two-thirds vote?
Yeah, which is basically the majority of the commission.
Well, four out of five, right, okay.
Four?
Four out of five have to, have to agree to it to call the question, is what he's saying.
Not three?
Well, three is, um, 60%, and, uh, two-thirds is, uh...
Do you want, how many, how many do we need to call the question? Three or four?
Four.
It's 3.3, so, uh...
That's three.
Three.
Thank you.
All right, please call the roll.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Commissioner Sterman?
No.
Commissioner Herbst?
No.
Mayor Trentalas?
Yes, so the question's been called, uh, no further discussion on this item, uh, Mr. Spence, what's the next, uh, what's the next, uh...
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
They said vote on the resolution?
No, wait, no, wait, wait, it was a three to two vote.
Right, so he said it, it's approved on three.
You said it had to be four.
No, he didn't, he said three.
3.2, meaning an arm.
That's three, that's three.
That's three.
The city attorney has told us it's three.
Well, 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 it's had to be 3.2.
He said three, three votes, sir.
Three votes, he just said.
Okay, so, uh, there's a resolution, uh, that has been introduced by Commissioner Herbst, um, would you like to repeat your resolution, Commissioner Herbst?
Certainly, Mayor, I would enjoy doing that, so, my resolution is to approve the comprehensive agreement, subject to clarification of the final terms, bringing it back for ratification at our next meeting.
Okay, so that's the resolution, do you all understand it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, please call the roll.
Okay, as amended, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, approving a comprehensive agreement with Hall of Fame Partners LLC for a qualifying project to redevelop the existing east and west buildings of the City of Fort Lauderdale Aquatic Complex located at 501 Seabreeze Boulevard, also known as One Hall of Fame Drive, Fort Lauderdale, Florida, approving and authorizing the city manager to execute various agreements appended thereto, together with any supplemental documents in connection therewith, approving the leasing of city-owned property located at 501 Seabreeze Boulevard, Fort Lauderdale, Florida, 33316, to Hall of Fame Partners LLC, a Florida limited liability company, providing notice of its intent to lease city-owned property located at 501 Seabreeze Boulevard, Fort Lauderdale, Florida, 33316, to International Swimming Hall of Fame, Inc., a Florida not-for-profit corporation, or to an organization affiliated with the International Swimming Hall of Fame, Inc., pursuant to Section 8.13 of the city charter and providing for an effective date. Commissioner Glassman?
All right, wait, 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 so that's the resolution to approve, but that's not exactly the resolution that Commissioner Herbst has proffered, Commissioner Herbst has proffered that resolution, subject to changes...
As amended.
Subject to changes that, that the commission, uh, may require, all right, for final ratification at a subsequent meeting, so that's what we're voting on, we're not voting on the comprehensive agreement, we're voting on the, the, receiving the comprehensive agreement, but, but, but subject to commission changes at a, at a later, uh, meeting.
So, so Mayor, resolutions are written document, and the only document that you have before you attach to the CAM is the resolution drafted by our office, and it has a number of other items besides just the approval of the comprehensive agreement, I'm, kinda have the difficult job of interpreting the, the proffer of the, the introduction of the resolution as amending Section Two of that resolution, um, which currently states that it approves the comprehensive agreement in substantially the form attached, um, not quite certain how the language is gonna be modified to bring the item, I think I heard Commissioner Herbst say, to bring the item back at the next meeting for final ratification, so it's a, so, may I suggest that, or, just for clarity, so, Section Two will be amended, tentatively approving the comprehensive agreement, subject to ratification at the October 3rd.
Well, it's basically saying, we approve it, but we don't approve it.
Well, I would like to move to strike all amendments.
Well, wait, 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 so Section Two says that the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale affirms its findings in Resolution 2117, and hereby approves the comprehensive agreement in substantially the form attached, so, it's open to further modifications, is the way I interpret that, Mr. Spence, as long as it does not alter the fundamental terms.
As long as it doesn't make substantive changes.
Right.
Is how that's, uh, generally interpreted and read.
Is that something you can live with, Commissioner Herbst?
Yes, it is, because as we've already seen, we're clarifying several of the issues and concerns that I have without actually making any changes, so, I, I think this is something that, that we can work our way through, there may be one or two things that There may be one or two things that I think we want to consider as protections for the city. It may just be a matter, again, we've only had two days to look at this, and I've got issues that I need to clarify that I think are significant and important, and I'm trying to do that.
Well, I'm not disagreeing with you. I mean, I've been listening to your exchange.
No, you haven't. I appreciate that.
And it's been helpful to understand and make sure that we are clear on what these terms mean. But I think that we can probably all agree that Section Two, as written, allows us to approve the comprehensive agreement in substantially the form attached and allows for the types of things that you've been discussing. So, the resolution, then, that's being introduced is a resolution that's attached as Exhibit Six to PH1. So, that's our resolution that we're voting on tonight.
I need a little bit more clarity, because what you just said is different from what I've heard before.
Well, I'm just telling you right now, that's what we're voting on. Resolution is Exhibit Six to PH1, without any changes. Without changes.
With no changes.
No changes.
So, in other words, we're...
With no changes. That's it.
So, we're moving the comprehensive agreement forward as recommended by state?
What you see is Exhibit Six.
Wait, hold on a second. I see Exhibit Six. That's the resolution.
Correct. And that's what we're voting on. Okay.
Well, what happened to John's changes?
John has agreed that the resolution allows for the type of interpretative questions and commentary that he may want the commission to engage in after we approve it. It says, "We're approving the comprehensive agreement in substantially the form attached." So, substantially means not altering fundamental terms, but allowing for refinement and interpretation and explanation as he or any of us may have after we approve the agreement.
So, city attorney, what flexibility do we have, then, going forward to clarify some of these issues? So, I want to understand substantial, if that makes sense.
Substantive issues work to change the actual intent of the agreement. So, we usually have that terminology to facilitate cleaning up of agreements. But there's a potential that some of those terms that are... It doesn't contemplate, like, for example, changing the number of years that the term of an agreement...
So, that would be substantive, okay.
That would have to come back to the city commission for further action. But non-substantive changes would be able to be done prior to execution by the city manager.
Plus, the agreement allows for different stages of approval, and as you explained to us tonight, there's still multiple opportunities to refine and reform the agreement as we're moving forward and adopting different aspects of this project, right? We still don't have the site plan approved. We still don't have a number of components to this agreement approved. The purpose of tonight is to create a foundation upon which we can begin that discussion. Is that not true? You're nodding your head.
Again, the things that relate to the site plan are not the things that I'm concerned about. You know, there are things that, again, as I read through here...
You're looking at the business deal.
Right, the things that I look through here, when I see, like, Section 5.09, parking facility. It says, "During the term of this agreement, HOFP will have full control over the parking facilities located on the project." That's something that I want to talk about. Okay, before I turn over parking facilities, because remember, we've already built out the entire peninsula. We have already invested in parking facilities. We have a substantial investment in the dive tower and everything else that goes on there. And this says that we're turning over full control of all the parking facilities on the peninsula to HOFP. Now, that may or may not be their intent, but that's what it says. And so, you know, these are not things that are going to be covered under the site plan.
Can I clarify that?
Sure.
There's going to be parking that remains for the city. In fact, that twenty...
But it doesn't say that, ma'am. It doesn't say that.
Let her finish.
Well, it really does if you look at it. Let me explain something. Well, no, let me explain something.
If I look at it...
Somebody, well, it's in here. If that twenty-foot easement is there, because if you bring up the picture of the project, the city has their aquatic center, then they have parking on each side, right in front of the pool.
Right.
And they own that whole block of property. For us to be able to get back to the West Building, we need that twenty-foot easement.
Right.
But we're not going to take away the city's parking spaces along that line. So, that easement came about towards the end of the comprehensive agreement, because I'm looking at the survey that finally came in, and I asked, I said, I said, "Does the city, are these city parking spaces going to remain?" My team said yes. And I said, "Well, then, we need an easement through what the city owns, because the city owns that whole block." Those city parking spaces aren't going away.
By the way, I'm glad you brought up the easement, though, because one of the things about the easement is the easement doesn't state in the section for the easement, because I read that one, too, that the easement terminates with the end of the agreement. So, there's no termination on the easement?
Well, the easement is going to always... It's going to be needed once the city owns it. It'll go away, because it merges. An easement, if you own the ground and you take it back and you don't have a leasehold in between, it merges, so you own all of it.
So, let me read you Section 5.09.
Let me just... The parking that we're talking about controlling is in the parking deck, because we're going to have to have all valet.
But it doesn't say that in the agreement. The agreement says, and I'm going to read it to you line for line, "Parking facility during the term of this comprehensive agreement, HOFP have full control over the parking facilities located on the project, will shall include but not include setting of rates, blah, 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 valet, parking, everything else." That doesn't say that it's limited.
That's the parking deck, and we can clarify that.
I know, I know. That's what I want to do, is clarify this stuff.
That was written, and then, a few weeks ago, I was looking at the survey that came in, and I said... And we can clarify and say, the city's parking will not be disturbed. We can clarify that to say that when we're talking about the parking facility, we're talking about the parking deck that we're building on the West Building.
Absolutely. But when do I get to clarify that?
It's not a substantive change, correct?
Okay, so, we... But right, I want to have that conversation with you. That's all. I just want to make sure.
If it gets approved tonight, we'll make that change with Dwayne tomorrow.
Perfect.
Okay.
So...
You might make that change.
Well, I think it's understood that just talking about their own facility, the new facility, not talking about any existing facility. All right. All right, so, there's a resolution that's attached as Exhibit Six to the PH1 that's on the floor for a vote.
And we're, just for clarity, we are voting now on that Exhibit Six, that resolution, as written and as said in the CAM. Staff recommends the city commission adopt the resolution approving a comprehensive agreement, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, in substantially the form attached.
We all can read that.
Okay, but I just want to make sure.
Well, it says that, I just said...
No contingencies.
Okay. Mr. Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Hold on, wait, 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 wait. So, Commissioner Glassman continues to refine my resolution, so...
No, Commissioner Glassman...
I just want to make sure.
Now, we strike Commissioner Glassman's comments. He has nothing to do with what it says in Exhibit Six.
I guess, final ratification at our next meeting?
Right. We're just voting on Exhibit Six, the resolution that's been promulgated by staff, that's attached to the PH1. That's all we're voting on.
That's all we're voting on.
But, Mayor, I'm sorry. When do I get to have these conversations and bring it back for a final vote? Or don't I?
There's, well, the final vote, I'm not sure what you mean by final vote.
That's what I keep saying, is ratification. So, if we're going to make any changes, we need to bring that agreement back, okay? If we're going to make changes to this, if we're going to add clarifying language, city attorney, we make changes to this comprehensive agreement. Does it or does it not have to come back to the commission?
If it's a substantial change, it would have to come back to the city commission. So, what usually happens when you approve something in substantially the form attached, we further refine the document, and then, we execute that document under the authority of the resolution. We can, in this case...
Bring it back in an abundance of caution.
No, we can look at the items that you identify in your review, presuming that it's within a reasonable time period. Review it with counsel. Review it with counsel on the other side. And if any of those items, in our view, are substantive, come back for an amendment of the comprehensive agreement.
Okay. With that understanding, Mayor, please go ahead and call the vote.
Okay.
Mr. Clerk?
Commissioner Glassman?
You're going to have to bear with me. I'm hearing different things from the mayor as I'm hearing from Commissioner Herbst. I'm sorry. I'm not hearing you guys on the same page.
The mayor is saying...
Yes, what's the mayor saying?
The mayor is saying
Yes.
that we are voting on Exhibit Six
Yes.
that is attached to PH1.
That's the resolution number 23- whatever it'll be. Correct. Okay.
You asked what the mayor asked, what the mayor said.
That's what we're voting on.
Yeah, how many times do I have to say the same thing?
Well, I want this on the record. I've asked this a million times, because...
Because you want to keep talking.
No, because you're both saying different things. You're both saying different things.
Okay, stop.
I'm stopping.
Stop.
I'm stopping.
I called the question.
Wonderful.
Done. Stop.
Excellent.
Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Glassman?
I am voting to say yes on Exhibit Six, six pages exactly as it is stated in those six pages. Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sterman?
No.
Commissioner Herbst?
Since my colleague has chosen to add qualifying language, I am voting to approve this, subject to further discussion with the team on clarifying these items and moving it forward. And now, our poor city attorney has no idea what to do with this vote.
Correct. Because everybody's just standing motion. It's either yes or no.
Yes or no.
It's either yes or no. You know what, John? You are entitled to speak with all the parties, our staff, the applicant, all of them. You're entitled to get the interpretive analyses of everything. And honestly, I hope you do that, and then come back to the commission and tell us what you found out.
Exactly.
So that we have clarification and that everybody knows, you know, if there's any doubt in anyone's mind, and there is no doubt in my mind, but if there's any doubt in any of the commissioners' minds as to terms and conditions, I think they would appreciate that. We'd take it up at a conference and have further clarification, especially for the community to understand that. I don't think there's any adversion to that, right?
Right, without a doubt.
I think you welcome that, right?
Yes.
But tonight, we're just voting on Exhibit Six attached to PH1.
City Attorney, did we get disclosures?
Wait, wait, stop, 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 stop.
No disclosures?
Stop!
Okay.
There's nothing to... That's all we're voting on, and we're in the middle of a vote, and there's no dissenting opinions allowed in something like this. This is not the Supreme Court. We're just voting on Exhibit Six. And if you're... And, John, you're perfectly welcome to meet with anybody you want to get further clarification onto the terms.
City Attorney, do we need to do disclosures on a public hearing? And was seconded, and we're voting on something that John didn't put forward. Is that...
I don't understand this. It's not what John puts forward. I explained what the motion was, and we're voting on that. So, it's either yes or no. You voted no. And Commissioner Glassman, you voted yes. Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman voted yes. It's now for John Herbst to vote, one way or the other. Yes or no?
No disclosures.
And I vote yes.
And no disclosures.
Okay. Moving on.
And I look forward to meeting with you all next week, so we can finally actually work out the details.
We will.
And by the way, look, I just want you to know that I think this project, particularly with the addition of the aquarium, is going to be a great project. I look forward to seeing it get built. I want you to be tremendously successful, because I don't want to have to pay a dime on this. So, I need you to make a hell of a lot of money and relieve us of the burden of having to pay dead on this, and knock it out of the park, guys, so...
Thank you. We look forward to working with you. We need to take an hour break. No, I'm just kidding. PH2, public hearing, quasi judicial ordinance, rezoning from residential multifamily mid-rise medium-high-density district to northwest regional activity center, mixed-use east district, northwest Fourth Avenue. Anyone wishing to speak must be sworn in. The commission will announce any site visits, communications, or expert opinions received, and make them a part of the record. Commissioner Herbst, do you have any disclosures on this item?
None.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, conversation with Stephanie Toothaker.
I also had conversations with Ms. Toothaker. Commissioner Glassman?
August.
August 18th, 2022, with Ms. Stephanie Toothaker.
Commissioner Sterman?
Stephanie Toothaker.
Okay. Ms. Toothaker's been the only one who's asked to speak, but for questions only. No one else has signed up to speak. Someone wish to move to close public hearing? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sterman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst? Mayor Trentalles?
Yes, and public hearing on PH2 is now closed. Someone like to introduce the ordinance? It's been introduced. Please call the roll.
In ordinance amending Section 47-1.6. B of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida Unified Land Development Regulations through the revision of the official zoning map of the City of Fort Lauderdale Schedule A Revised Compilation Attached thereto and by reference made a part thereof, so is rezoning from residential multifamily mid-rise medium-high-density district to northwest regional activity center, mixed-use east, Olive Lots 37 and 38, Block 322, Progresso, according to the plat thereof, as recorded in Block Book 2, Page 18, of the public records of Dade County, Florida, located north of Northwest Sixth Street, east of Northwest Fourth Avenue, west of Northwest Third Avenue, and south of Northwest Seventh Street, all said lands being in the City of Fort Lauderdale, Broward County, Florida, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for defective date. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sterman?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Sterman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalz?
Yes. And PH two is now approved. PH three, public hearing, quasi judicial ordinance rezoning from residential multifamily mid-rise medium-high-density district to northwest regional activity center. Anyone wishing to speak must be sworn in and the commission will announce any site visits, communications, or expert opinions received and make them a part of the record. Commissioner, um, Herbst, do you have any disclosures?
None.
Vice Mayor?
Um, yes, Ms. Toothaker.
On PH three? Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Um, I don't recall having any conversations on this. Maybe with, if at all, would be with Stephanie Toothaker. Commissioner Glassman?
None.
And Commissioner Sterman?
Uh, Stephanie Toothaker.
Okay. Stephanie Toothaker has signed up to speak, but for questions only. And Anna Henry, Anna, are you here? Is that you, Anna?
No, that's Jennifer.
It's not Anna. Okay. I know you're getting punchy. All right. So Anna had enough. Anyway, so would someone please move to close public hearing?
So moved. Second.
Please call the roll to close public hearing on PH three.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sterman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yep.
Mayor Trentalz?
Yes. And public hearing on PH three is now closed. Would someone like to introduce the ordinance?
Introduced.
It's been introduced. Please call the roll.
In ordinance amending Section 47 dash 1.6 point B of the City of Fort Lauderdale Unified Land Development Regulations through the revision of the official zoning map of the City of Fort Lauderdale on Schedule A revised compilation attached thereto and by reference made a part thereof, so is rezone from residential family mid-rise medium-high-density district to northwest regional activity center, mixed-use west Olive Lots 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, and 8, June Park, according to the plat thereof, as recorded in Block Book 22, Page 18 of the public records of Broward County, Florida, together with the east half of the adjacent alley, to said lots vacated by city ordinance C-8921, recorded in the official records book 16461, Page 101 of the public records of Broward County, Florida, located north of Northwest Sixth Street, east of Northwest 10th Avenue, west of northeast, Northwest 9th Avenue, and south of Northwest Seventh Street. All said lands being in the City of Fort Lauderdale, Broward County, Florida, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for defective date. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
No.
Commissioner Sterman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalz?
Yes. And PH three is now approved. PH four, public hearing, quasi judicial ordinance approving a rezoning from heavy commercial light industrial business district to uptown urban village northeast district. This is at 6,700 and 6,750 North Andrews Avenue, RD investment properties. Anyone wishing to speak must be sworn in and the commission will announce any site visits, communications, or expert opinions received and make them a part of the record. Do you have any disclosures, Commissioner Herbst?
No.
Vice Mayor?
Robert Lockery?
No. No. I think Barbara Hall, you're on this one, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Who was it?
It was Barbara Hall. I don't think it was Mr. Lockery. Do you have it? Do you have a note showing Mr. Lockery?
I had it in my notes. Says, okay. There's no disclosure if it's not Mr. Lockery.
Um, I met with Barbara Hall. Commissioner Glassman?
I met with Barbara Hall on August 31st, 2023.
Commissioner Sterman?
None.
Actually, you know, Mayor, now that you mention it, I may have met with Barbara on this one because I know we did talk about a project of that way. This may have been it. So just in, in interest of covering my bases, we'll just say yes.
Okay. I, I may have two. I'll say yes.
Barbara, have we talked?
No.
Okay. All right.
I called, but it wasn't enough.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Um, okay. Barbara Hall's the only person who signed up to speak, but for questions only, I assume. Anyone wish to, would someone please move to close public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sterman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yep.
Mayor Trentalz?
Yes. Public hearing on PH four is now closed. Would someone like to introduce the ordinance?
Introduced.
It's been introduced. Uh, please call the roll.
In ordinance of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, amending Section 47 dash 1.6 point B of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida Unified Land Development Regulations through the revision of the official zoning map of the City of Fort Lauderdale on Schedule A revised compilation attached thereto and by reference made a part thereof, so is rezone from B3 Heavy Commercial Light Industrial Business District to Uptown Urban Village Northeast District, a portion of parcel A reflections, according to the plat thereof, as recorded in Block Book 119, Page 46 of the public records of Broward County, Florida, located northwesterly of I-95, east of North Andrews Avenue, north of east Cypress Creek Road, and south of Cypress Creek Canal. All said lands being in the City of Fort Lauderdale, Broward County, Florida, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for defective date. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sterman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalz?
Yes. And PH four is now approved. Moving on to our ordinances on second reading, OSR one. This is a quasi judicial ordinance approving a rezoning from residential single-family low, medium-density district to residential single-family duplex low-medium-density districts to parks, recreation, and open space district, south of New River and north of Southwest Fifth Court. Anyone wishing to speak must be sworn in and the commission will announce any site visits, communications, or expert opinions received and make them a part of the record. Commissioner Herbst, do you have any additional disclosures?
I do not.
Vice Mayor?
None.
I have none. Commissioner Glassman?
None.
And Commissioner Sterman?
None.
Okay. Um, no one signed up to speak. No one signed up to speak on any of the rest of these items. So, um, someone like to move to close public hearing?
So moved.
It's been moved. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sterman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalz?
Yes. And public hearing is now closed. Uh, would someone like to introduce the ordinance?
Introduce.
Please call the roll.
In ordinance amending Section 47 dash 1.6 point B of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida Unified Land Development Regulations through, through the revision of the official zoning map of the City of Fort Lauderdale on Schedule A revised compilation attached thereto and made a reference part thereof, so is rezone from RD 15 Residential Single Family Duplex Medium Density District and residential single-family low-medium-density district to parks, recreation, and open space districts, Olive Lots 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11 Riverside Landing, according to the plat thereof, as recorded in Block Book 176, Page 20 of the public records of Broward County, Florida, located north of Southwest Sixth Court, east of Southwest 14th Avenue, west of Southwest 11th Avenue, and south of North Fork, New River. All said lands being in the City of Fort Lauderdale, Broward County, Florida, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for defective date. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sterman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalz?
Yes. And OSR one is now approved on second reading. OSR two, it's the second reading and ordinance amending Chapter 28 of the city's Code of Ordinances for Water, Wastewater, and Stormwater, providing for increases in tapping charges, water rates, wastewater rates, master meter charges, service availability charges, sprinkling meter charges, and private fire service protection. Um, we're not looking for disclosures. So would someone like to introduce the ordinance?
Introduced.
Please call the roll.
In ordinance of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, amending Chapter Eight, Water, Wastewater, and Stormwater, Sections 28 dash 76, 28 eight dash 141, 28 dash 143, 28 dash 144, and 28 one, 28 dash 145 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, providing for increases to tapping charges, water weights, water rates, wastewater rates, master meter charges, service availability charges, sprinkler meeting charge, meter charges, sprinkling meter charges, and private fire service protection, repeal of conflicting ordinance provisions, and providing for an effective date. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sterman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalz?
Yes. And OSR two is now approved on second reading. OSR three, second reading and ordinance amending the pay plan of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida by amending the non-bargaining unit compensation table in Schedule Six, providing for a 3% general wage increase effective October 3rd, 1st, 2023. Someone like to introduce the ordinance?
Introduce.
It's been introduced. Please call the roll.
In ordinance of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, amending the pay plan of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida by amending the non-bargaining unit compensation table in Schedule Six, special employees providing a 3% general wage increase to all non-bargaining unit employees and all Schedule Six special employees, and providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinance provisions, and an effective date. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sterman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalz?
Yes. And OSR three is now approved on second reading. Finally, OSR four, it's the second reading and ordinance amending Chapter 15, Article 10 Vacation Rentals to modify the vacation rental registration process to revise the qualifications of a responsible party, vacation rental standards, the process of renewal of registration, and suspension of the certificate. Anyone wishing to speak must be sworn in and the commission will announce any site visits, communications, or expert opinions received and make them a part of the record. Do, do you have any additional disclosures?
I don't think we need any disclosures.
Commissioner Sterman?
I mean, Commissioner Herbst? Do we, do we need site visits for this?
I'm sorry?
No, I, I think, I think we need to...
Additional, additional.
Oh, wait, wait, wait. I'm hearing all these, what, what'd you say, David?
No disclosures necessary.
I don't think, there's no disclosures necessary for this one.
Well, it says it right here.
I, I think it was just added instead of title and error.
Is that a mistake?
Yes. I believe that's the type.
Okay. All right.
But I have none anyway.
Uh, no one has signed up to speak. Uh, would someone like to introduce the ordinance?
Introduce.
Please call the roll.